Looks like you're good to go.
All right, thanks Vanessa. Hi, everybody. This is 6:31 PM. The March 23, 2021 meeting of the Southborough Board of Selectment. All of the members of the board are present. And so I'll call a meeting to order first time, and I'll call it to order again after I read the governor's intro. Pursuant to Governor Baker's March 12, 2020 order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, General Law Chapter 30A, Section 18, and the governor's March 15, 2020 order imposing strict limitation on the number of people that may gather in one place. This meeting of the Southborough Board of Selectment will be conducted via remote participation to the greatest extent possible. Specific information and the general guidelines for remote participation by members of the public and their parties with a right and a requirement to attend this meeting can be found on the Town of Southborough website at www.southbrowtown.com. For this meeting, members of the public who wish to watch or participate in the meeting may do so in the following manner by finding the meeting at www.southbrowtown.com/remotemeetings. Now, in-person attendance of members of the public will be permitted, but every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings in real time via technological means. In the event that we are unable to do so despite best efforts, we will post on Southborough's website an audio or video recording transcript or other comprehensive record of proceedings as soon as possible after the meeting. And with that, I will call it again to order, and welcome, everybody. Hi, folks. And I am going to look for participants. Attendees, I don't see any hands up for public comment, except for Mr. Litt. It's okay if we could bring Mr. Litt over.
Good evening.
Litt, how are you?
Oh, making trouble as usual.
Well, not yet, but, and by the way, we'll be the judges of that.
Give him a chance. Come on.
Fair enough. I just wanted to observe that the governor, I believe, has signed a law which allows you to change the date of the town election. And given that we now have competitive races and town meeting is now scheduled to be after the town election, which is the inverse of the usual way that we do things, I thought you might want to consider whether May 11th is still the right date. There are two considerations that come to mind. One is that should the composition of a board change as things stand, the people presenting or defending a position on an article before town meeting would be different from those who actually voted on it. And the second is, you know, should anything at town meeting in the unlikely event, for example, of a two and a half question or anything, any other thing puts something on the ballot, you would be required to have a special election instead of having it go through in the normal order of things. So in any case, I just thought you should think about this.
No, actually, very good thoughts. And I'm looking quickly. I don't see Mr. Hagerty out there. So that's not the sort of discussion we want to have without him involved. But it's a good thought. I mean, I thought about the same thing when I saw the dates. And although Mr. Shea may, he'll probably be dissenting vote. It's like, no, do not extend, do not extend the time.
I'm sorry. It's nothing against Mr. Shea. I have all the respect in the world for him, but I did think it was a good time to put it on your radar screen.
Yeah, no, no, I'm suggesting that he would vote against extending it. He sees light at the end of the tunnel. My kids are all screaming in the background. No, no! All right. Thank you, Mr. Litt. And Claire Reynolds, can we bring Claire over?
Good evening.
Hello, Claire, how are you?
Thank you. Just one quick thing. In January, I had sent an email about the One Stop Program, and I know that there are activities that are happening with it. I just want to make sure that everybody understands that the due date for the whole proposal from the town is due at the end of next week. There is a tremendous amount of work that is involved with putting together a comprehensive response from the town. So I have not received any emails. I'm not on any of the email lists, but I just wanted to make sure that everybody understands what a great program this is. And I hope we take advantage of it. Thank you very much. Any questions?
I don't, I don't think so. I don't see any hands up, but just for, we hopefully are on top of it. And I've gotten, seen a few emails, you know, sort of internal that seem to indicate that we are moving very much in the right direction.
Great.
Okay. Thanks, Claire. The, you know, just, just as a very quick aside, you know, and I don't know what other folks' view is, but, you know, last summer, we decided to have public comment bookend the meetings, both at the beginning and the end. And I actually think it's kind of worked out reasonably well. And I don't know if it's, you know, I don't have the experience except for one year before, but it just seems that, that we're getting, we're getting a decent number of public comment, which is a good thing. So I see heads nodding, so other folks, I guess, seem to feel the same way. Good. And next up on our scheduled appointments, item 3A. I don't, Mark or Vanessa, you said that Mr., and I'm hoping I'm saying his name right, Montio was going to be available. I don't see him in the...
Yep, I brought him actually over as a panelist.
Oh, you already, I'm looking at attendees. Okay.
As well as Mr. Probst, who has been a great help during the interview process.
Oh, hey, Matt. And Mr. Montio, am I saying your name right, first of all?
Yeah, that's actually properly pronounced in Puerto Rico.
I'm going to declare victory then and stop talking. Welcome, and, and, and hopefully for a very good thing. You, the scheduled appointment is, is for you as the Town of Southborough's IT manager. I'm Marty Healy. I'm the chair, and you'll have a chance to say hello to the other members of the board in just a second. I will tell you, you know, with Matt and Vanessa spearheading the effort, we've heard nothing but good things about the, both the process and what the process has resulted in, which is bringing you before us tonight. Took a look at your resume, very impressive. And, you know, I don't have a whole lot of questions. I may have some follow-up, but I'm going to start off with our vice chair, Ms. Brascio.
Great, thank, thank you. Good evening. I'm not going to try to say your last name, but I'll call you Jason if that's okay.
That's perfectly fine.
Welcome, Jason. It's a pleasure to have you here. I second what Marty said. I commend the job that Matt and Vanessa have done to get us to this point, to get you here with us. They've had very good things to say about you. Your resume is impressive. I just have kind of one general question for you. Based on your conversations, I know you've spoken to Mr. Laflame as well, and Matt has, has been a champion in, you know, kind of getting you up to speed and where things are in Southborough at this time. And I'm not putting you on the spot, and I'm not asking you to stick to anything you say. But if you had a vision of like your first 60 days, say, is there one thing in particular based on what you've learned about Southborough that you, you might like to work on during that time?
Um, well, without putting me, I guess, on the spot, but, I mean, for me, especially when it comes to an IT infrastructure, my first thing is to know what I'm working on. Where am I? What, what, what network is there? What infrastructure is in place? A lot of that is what I would want to do, at least within my first 30 days. After that is to kind of tackle what things I can, you know, low hanging fruit in a sense, things that I can at least get to right off the, right off the bat and attack and complete, so that I'm not, you know, giving myself such a long-term goal. I can at least have some short-term things to, to accomplish. So that would be something that I would be looking forward to do.
Well, that's a great answer, and I thank you very much, and you handled being on the spot very well. That's it for me, Marty. Thank you.
All right.
All right, and Mr. Montio, just from that experience right there, you realize that, that you're not dealing with a technologically savvy guy. And I should have been more on top of moving on to our next member of the select board, Ms. Malinowski.
Hi, Jason. Nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you too.
And thank you to Vanessa and Matt for bringing us a great candidate to interview and appoint tonight. What attracted you to Southborough and switching over to the public sector?
Um, well, the public sector is definitely new to me. The, the role in itself is something that I am looking to do in, in my own goals, my own personal goals, is becoming an IT manager, becoming a director of IT in a sense. So a lot of that is what brought me into, you know, at least having the conversations. And with the conversations I've had with Mark and Vanessa, they know that my role that I'm in currently, I'm in a good place and I'm in a good position that it wouldn't be something I would just jump out of unless I had something there to kind of reel me in. And, and talking to Vanessa and talking to Mark and also Matt as well has, has actually kind of made me comfortable to say, you know what, this is something that I'm worth jumping into.
Great. Okay, that's all for me. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thanks, Chelsea, and Mr. Shea.
Jason, nice to meet you. Thank you for your interest in the position.
Thank you.
And I guess I would ask, is there anything like in your, you know, from your current experience or background on the private side, do you think that would play well in the public sector? And, you know, from what you've learned so far, you know, ideas that you might have coming in that, that might play well to, to help the town?
Um, I'm not, see, so in the private sector, it could be different as far as security and, and just enhancing some of that. I'm not, again, I'm not too familiar with the private sector and things that I could work on, but I have seen, I've been doing a lot of research, watching some of Matt's videos and things that, you know, they're talking about in the city that I'm, that I'm actually really interested in engaging in. So just kind of piggybacking off of what I'm hearing in, in the, in the conferences with Matt, I'd like to just get into some of those roles if possible, just see where I am with that.
Sounds great. Sounds great. And again, thanks to everybody that was involved and recommending Jason. Looks like a great candidate for us. Thanks, Marty.
All right, thanks, Brian. And Mr. Stivers.
Thanks. Welcome, Jason. Good to meet you, and I don't have a lot of questions. I have great confidence in the recruiting process. It sounds like it's a good match. And I guess I would observe that the only real danger here is that you'll be overwhelmed by the low-hanging fruit. I think you'll find that it is abundant, and it'll be an interesting process to figure out, you know, which one you reach for first, second, third, and so forth. So we look forward to seeing you hit the ground running soon.
Look forward to doing that as well. Thank you.
And, and Jason, I mean, I agree with everything that's been said and, and very much trust the process, which, and I'll just make sure, Vanessa, it was Chief Achilles, Matt, Probst, yourself, Mark Purple, Brian Ballantyne, and I guess ex-officio member of Hiring Committee, Tom Laflamme.
Yes, we're very grateful to Tom for his assistance, even though he's moved on to his new position. So we really appreciate that.
Okay, so we very much trust, trust the process. And I think, Jason, what you're going to find out very quickly is that, you know, and you may already have. I'm not sure if you've just met Matt from our municipal technology committee or if you've met some of the other folks. But, but, you know, they have, they've been in front of us a couple of times over the last couple of months, and they are a bit of a whirlwind in terms of, of, you know, pulling us into the 21st century in terms of technology. So, so you have, you know, very willing and able partners in that respect. I guess the final thing I'll say is, is, you know, don't be afraid, reluctant, whatever, to, to push us. And by us, I don't just mean the Board of Selectment. I mean the town. And, you know, we've got a very sophisticated, you know, very able municipal technology committee. And, you know, we, we realize that there's some ground to cover for us in a number of different areas. And we're going to be relying on you and our municipal technology committee. But again, don't be reluctant to, to push us. And, you know, we'll say no mas at some point, but, but for the time being, you know, again, don't be reluctant to push and push hard.
Sounds good. Thank you very much.
All right. So with that, I am assuming, Vanessa, that the personnel board...
They have met. They did actually meet late yesterday afternoon and did approve Jason's starting salary and agree with the appointment.
Okay, so I guess I will move that we appoint Mr. Montio to the position of Information Technology Manager for the Town of Southborough at a, an annual starting salary of $101,000, which, as Vanessa's memo indicates, is budgeted. So actually, I...
Yes.
All right, that was second. I think Mr. Stivers got there first. Maybe it was Mr. Shea. Discussion none, Ms. Brascio.
Aye.
Ms. Malinowski.
Aye.
Mr. Shea.
Aye.
Mr. Stivers.
Aye.
And Mr. Healy is aye. From all of us, Jason, welcome, and we look forward to seeing you around.
Thank you so much. I really appreciate it.
All right. Enjoy the rest of your evening.
Thank you. You too.
All right, bye-bye.
Bye-bye.
And really to Vanessa and Matt, just terrific work. I know it was a, a, you know, a lengthy process for good reason, but you certainly seemed to have gotten us in a good place. So thank you for that.
Thank you.
And with that, we move on to item 3A, which is a discussion about the Board of Health's FY '22 budget with Ms. Woodford. And Sam, do you want to set the table on this a little bit? Or do you want me to leave that to myself and Ms. Woodford? I'll, I'll defer to you.
Let me just make a quick comment. Good evening, Mary Lou. How are you?
Hello.
Hello.
Good to see you. I've been following this in terms of the, my liaison role here, and I think we've made great progress on a number of areas. There are still some issues to be resolved around the staffing questions. And I guess it's my view that the more we can get the right people in the room here electronically, at least, to discuss how we move forward, the better chance we have of coming up with an approach that works for everybody. So I think that, you know, I will look to Mary Lou to fill us in on, you know, recent activities, Board of Health, and current thoughts about the staffing issues, and see where we go from there.
All right, with that, I'll just, I'll just add a little bit of an additional intro to that, Ms. Woodford. And that is, at some of our most recent meetings, we've had discussions about, among other things relating to your budget, the, the prospect and possibility of regionalization. So in terms of touching on the, the staffing needs, where you find yourselves in terms of both your, the perceived staffing needs, what that means for your FY '22 budget proposal, what your thoughts are, and any updates about discussions or movement along the lines of regionalization. And I guess just finally, I guess I'll, I'll just say that, that, you know, we want to have this discussion because the Board of Selectment obviously has a, has an important role in any budget season. That being said, we certainly understand and appreciate the fact that the, the Board of Health is its own, you know, freestanding, you know, elected entity, and obviously respect that in terms of, of, you know, the information you're bringing to us and the positions you all are taking. So with that as some additional intro, I will toss it to you to, to update us on where we are.
Awesome. Thank you, Marty, and thank you all for having me here or asking, Sam asked me to come. I'm not getting to get into the weeds on the budget because I know we're going to discuss that on the 6th, and I think there's some other board members that want to be part of that. But I wanted to address some of the questions. I did listen to your meeting last week, and there was some misinformation at that meeting and talking about, you know, our thoughts on how to support public health in Southborough. So I just want to give you an update on where we're at and, and sort of kind of what's been going on. So we clearly know that COVID has shined a light on our inadequacies and our underfunding and understaffing of the Health Department. We've been struggling to, to meet the needs, and that's meeting sort of really basic needs. As you know, we were able to hire a interim Public Health Director in January, Dr. Heather Alker. She's only able to work 20 hours. We're only able to hire a part-time Health Director. I'm praying, and all I can do, that she stays because she's, she's stretched to the limit right now. We currently do not have a public health nurse because Emily Amico, who quickly got burnt out with all of the requirements of the public health nursing role. She resigned in February, and so we're left with a gap right now. And personally, because I am a public health nurse and I've been trying to help the best I can, I'm working close to 20 hours a week for the Health Department. I, I have two other full-time jobs, and I can't sustain this very long. So I'm hoping this all can come to some resolution soon. I am excited to let you know, we did, with the help of advisory, in agreeing to fund whatever balance of CARES Act funding doesn't support the role of a public health nurse, they are willing to cover that, although we're pretty confident that CARES Act will cover that. But because of the uncertainty of funding, our public health nurse posting, we had two really excellent candidates, and we offered the position to them, and they declined because of the uncertainty of funding. We were, we just came to select an individual, a woman from Southborough. We're hoping to appoint her on Friday at our, at our Board of Health meeting this week to take on that role of a public health nurse, and I think that will help Dr. Alker tremendously. She has said, I don't, I, like I said, I, she's trying to, she's trying to plug the holes right now. Her, a lot of her work right now is on a regional vaccination clinic, which, as you know, because Mark explained to you at the last meeting that we were approved to be part of this regional vaccination clinic with Westborough. There are some substantial requirements of us to provide staffing to conduct this. And so I would say most of Dr. Alker's work at this point is on that effort and, and making sure. But there's a lot of other sort of basic public health things that are happening. We have noise complaints. We had a foodborne illness outbreak last, this past month. You know, all of those things still continue to go on. And so moving forward and trying to figure out how do we, how do we adequately staff and fund our Health Department to do what needs to get done from a mandated and a requirement perspective is, is what we've been working hard to do. I, it's, I want to let you know that we, the Board of Health, is working on any and every opportunity to fund our core public health services. That doesn't get us to what we're required to do and mandated to do, but at least it'll get us to cover the core services. And that's the budget we proposed for a full-time Health Director, a full-time nurse, and a full-time admin person. The, the thought that we are not willing to look at regionalization is untrue. I, I just, I want you to know, and, and personally, I think we need to collaborate more. I wish if in the future you have Board of Health questions, you invite us to your meetings so that you can hear directly from the board, so it's not secondhand, thirdhand of, you know, what the board thinks or what the board wants to happen. We're, we're looking at anything and everything to fund this. Regionalization, right now, we're hopefully going to apply to the Shared Services Grant, which DPH put out. This is the first time DPH has put out this kind of money for shared services. It's a tremendous opportunity for us to capitalize on some dollars. It's going to help us fund not just core services, but some of the other mandatory services that we should be providing. We, Dr. Heather has been working a lot on this. She met with the Metro West Group, Metro West Foundation has been very helpful. Dr. Sam Wong, who was the Health Director and originally in Hudson and then in Framingham, but he got burnt out very quickly in Framingham, and he left his position in January. He's been helping the Metro West Foundation, and he's willing to work with us in helping us to write the grant for the Shared Services Grant. So currently, we're working with Northborough, Southborough, Westborough, and Boyleston. There's a three-town minimum to apply to this Shared Services Grant. It can provide up to $300,000 annually for three years. Hopefully, there might be more. But it's a strict requirement of this grant is that you do not surplant or surplace any current funding or positions that are available because it's meant to supplement cities and towns that can't provide the core services and helping them to do that. We had a great meeting last week. There's another meeting this week to try to provide that. And I think that this is going to be really viable option for us. And if we think about regionalization going forward, this Shared Services Grant gives us an opportunity to work with other communities and see if we can work together. See if we can do those shared services in a way that's funded, and can we do it in a way that maybe is more sustainable over time? We see it as a great opportunity to work with other towns to provide those, those basic public health services.
Okay, that, that actually is great to hear on the, on the stuff that's going on on the regional, regionalization side. Let me just ask you, and Chelsea, then I'm going to go to you. And this is, this, this, this does not, this is not an indication of where my thinking is on the budget. And I, I'm appreciative of the fact that, that, you know, and in the weeds, discussion of that is better held on April 6th than tonight. But obviously, your budget is, is front and center for, for what you've been thinking about the last year. Not, it's not specific to the Board of Health, but one of the things that we, and quite frankly, the town, thinks about when there are staffing needs that are identified is, is what can be do, what needs to be done in the immediate term? Is there a phased approach that makes sense? Because we're always mindful of budgetary impact in the year we're dealing with. And, and you layer on top of that the fact that we're, you know, I think for the balance of fiscal year '22, we're going to be, remain in a, in a COVID environment. You know, you know, God willing, we'll, we'll, we'll emerge into, you know, a greater sense of normalcy. But in terms of, of getting everything back on its feet, that's going to take at least 2022, fiscal year 2022. So if, if, if there were a, a phased approach with, with, you know, one or more positions being targeted in the short term for hopefully CARES Act funding, what is the priority of the positions you're looking for? What's the priority? You know, and, and if, if, does it make sense, even if it's not from a prioritization, does it make sense to focus on one of those positions as, as, as one that makes the most sense for targeting from, from, you know, the short-term COVID funding that clearly is going to be available in 2022? Sorry, long question, but I think it was comprehensible and understandable, so.
No, definitely. And, and, and this is where maybe it would have helped to be in discussion with you guys through the process because there's been long, extensive discussions about what we need to move forward. And that's really, really sharpening the pencil the best we could is how we got to this core services of Health Director, Nurse, and Administrator. And when you think about, and that doesn't get to all of the, all of the public health services that we need and should be doing. This just gives us the core, the basic core. So without a full-time Health Director, it's hard to be able to work on grants that we can get without someone who has the time and the capability to work on those grants, without a full-time nurse that can alleviate some of the stressors for that Health Director so they can work on the grants, they can work on the regionalization pieces, they can work on working with other towns in the shared decision-making, working with the Fire Chief, working with emergency preparedness. And then the full-time admin is critical to making sure all this gets done. We have so many permitting and sort of required documentation that needs to get done. Who's going to do that unless we have a full-time admin? Just answering the phones, our communication is really poor right now. I feel like we, we're almost, we're almost 100% septic. We should be giving more information to our residents about septic, how to choose an engineer to do their septic reviews? How, what are the requirements for septic? There's just so much we should be doing that we're not doing. And so when you think about the positions, there's a lot of other positions that are needed and should be done. And we're hoping that the Shared Services Grant is going to fill those gaps. But in order for us to do that and work with other towns, we need those three core positions to do that. And I know it seems like a lot, but it's kind of like, to me, it's kind of like funding a fire department that doesn't have enough staff to reach the whole town, funding a police department that doesn't have enough police officers that are able to work the full shifts. It's just, I think we haven't done a great job at communicating to you and to the residents of Southborough as to what public health does and what they need to do and what they should be doing.
Chelsea, I'm going to go to you.
Thank you for the update, Mary Lou. I do have a few questions. Can you explain what Southborough's role is in the clinic? And like, are we staffing it one day at a time? Is that the plan or kind of, can you elaborate on that a little bit?
Sure. So the vaccine clinic is still to be determined. There's another meeting this week. Chief Achilles and Neil Spazey have been phenomenal because we don't have the bandwidth to even be participating as much as we should be. And their effort to do this has, just, we couldn't do it without them. The conversations now, because Westboro is the lead, and the conversations now, Westboro is in the process of hiring a logistics coordinator? Or hopefully that will happen because that's going to be critical to helping with registrations of participants, helping with staffing, helping with all of those things. We are required to provide staffing. We don't know if it's going to be on a single day, like every Monday we have to staff. The thought process now is that there's going to be time slots throughout the week that different towns will staff. So I don't know the answer to your question, hoping this logistics person will be able to work on that. We have to think about, it's not just hiring a volunteer to help because there's HIPAA requirements, there's licensing requirements. There's, there's things that we need to think about and who you hire to do what job. And like I said, Westboro's taken the lead on that. But just the work that goes into having those discussions and doing that, Dr. Heather has really, really stepped to the plate and, and working with Chief and Neil to try to figure that out the best for our residents. In order to get approved to be one of these regional sites, we had to attest that we could provide 750 vaccines in a day. Now granted, right now, they don't have the capacity to give us that much vaccine, but that could ramp up very quickly in a week. We don't know, and so we need to be prepared. And that's really challenging to try to figure out how to manage that.
And are we anticipating that paramedics are going to administer these vaccines?
There have been approvals for paramedics, EMTs. They can administer, but we need the nurses to draw them up and prepare them. So, I mean, there's just, there's a lot of moving pieces to sort of pull it off. Also, another big piece is there's software, it's called PrepMod, that DPH put out that is managing the vaccine distribution, taking all the information. Well, DPS just changed the software that they're going to use for this site. So it's a whole new software program that's got to be learned. Dr. Heather and Barbara, our admin, got up to speed on PrepMod. Now they have to learn a whole new software system to manage that because the registration process in PrepMod doesn't sync up with the immunization, I guess, distribution piece. So I guess without getting into the weeds, there's, there's a lot of detail that goes into pulling this off.
Okay, thank you. And you had mentioned the regionalization piece with a few other towns. Do you know the staffing models that they have? And are you saying that in order to go into this regionalization model, we need to have these three full-time members to do that?
So it's a shared services grant, it's not a regionalization. I want to make clear because one of the towns talked about regionalization and it's not a regionalization grant. There's a big difference between regionalization and shared services. This is a shared services grant. It's helping to supplement municipalities on providing the core public health services that many towns don't have. So one of the first activities, I guess you would say, of this shared service is if we got the grant, and it's going to happen quick, they're looking at money coming out in May. The grant application is due April 1st. So there's a lot of work being done right now with Metro West Foundation, with central mass planning. Both of those are very intricately involved. And that, that grant, if we get it, Northborough has volunteered to take on the fiscal responsibility of that. There's a, there's a lot of work that goes into being that fiscal agent. It's managing the finances, it's managing the oversight, it's managing the reports and all of that. So they will get paid to do that, but we currently don't have the bandwidth to do that. So we're thankful that Northborough can do that. The discussions we've had to date, one of the biggest things is that all four of the municipalities that would be participating in this want to upgrade their digital software program for inspectional services. We currently are pretty archaic in the health department from a paper perspective. And there is software that's out there, it's very expensive, but it will streamline all the inspections from a sanitary, environmental, and food inspection perspective that will give data that's just a lot easier to see, a lot easier to navigate, a lot easier to, for both residents and for anyone else who wants to monitor what's going on from an inspectional perspective. So all four have agreed that that's a big part of this grant, that all four towns would be upgraded to get this, this software. There's also training that goes in with it and all of that. The other two, two core services that the towns agreed that they need is nursing services and inspectional services. So for Southborough, if, you know, Taylor comes on, the new nurse, Taylor West, that we hope to appoint on Friday, full-time, that helps us from a nursing's perspective. But there's going to be things that she's going to go on vacation, she's going to be not available to work. So the Shared Services Grants is going to help us there. Right now, we have two days of inspectional services that aren't covered at all. So when things come up on, on one of those two days, we're at a loss. The Shared Services Grant will help us to manage that. There may be other things from an epidemiology perspective. Part of the grant is looking at doing a complete assessment of all four towns. What are the needs of those four towns from a public health perspective? What, what are we able to provide? What aren't we able to provide? And where can those gaps fill? And so Metro West Foundation and Dr. Sam Wong has, has agreed to participate in that. And that's going to give us a really good idea of where we're at. How do we move forward to implement the blueprint as the state legislature wants us to do and move to a more comprehensive public health department that's, that's sustainable over time?
Okay, thank you for that. And can you elaborate on the number of hours that are in your FY '20 budget for your nursing employee?
A full, a one full-time position, 37 and a half hours.
All right, FY '20.
FY '20?
Sorry, 20, sorry, FY '21, the current year we're in, how many hours are in that?
So the current year we have is 15 hours. So Leslie, Leslie Chamberlain left the position in February. Leslie Chamberlain was part-time with the health department and part-time with senior center. And so when she left her position in February, the benefits that she was receiving from the town were no longer needed because she's continued with the Council on Aging at 12 hours and we were only allowed to hire a half-time nurse. So there were no benefits, we were not allowed to offer a position with benefits. So what we're asking is that we're able to use those benefits for this full-time employee going forward. So we're going from 19 and a half hours, which we're currently have before Emily resigned in February, to 37 and a half hours for 2022.
So the employee that, or the person that you're hoping to appoint on Friday is going to be 37 and a half hours? And you are planning on using CARES Fund, CARES Funding to fund that position?
So we were given approval from advisory that they would cover whatever costs were not absorbed by CARES Act funding. However, probably more than 90% or more of the work that she's doing is COVID-related. So I anticipate that most of that, most of her funding will come forward. But we're asking our FY '22 budget to include a full-time nurse. We, because we, we need that for core services going forward.
Okay, so if we include it in the FY '22 budget, then it's a budgeted position and we won't be able to use CARES Funding?
Yes, you will. That's been verified, you will. Even a budgeted position, it's a newly budgeted position. It will be able to be covered by CARES Act through December of '21.
Okay.
Carla got verification of that.
Okay, um, okay, I think that's all my questions for now. Thank you.
All right, thanks, Chelsea. Mr. Shea.
Mary Lou, how are you? Thanks for joining us tonight. So this has been very, very helpful, very, very good information that you're sharing. I appreciate you joining us and taking the time tonight. And I think that, you know, what I'm hearing from, from your presentation, that the increase in staffing is really, it's not a pandemic-driven need, that it is a Board of Health, the overall department, the overall boards need. And I think that that is the message that we really need to deliver to people and get out is that, because I think it's going to be natural for those that show up at town meeting, well, you know, here we are in the pandemic and Board of Health's budget is going up. There's an A equals B, you know, the increase is a result of the pandemic. And I think that it's important to continue this discussion to talk about the overall mission for the Board of Health to, to help justify this. And quite honestly, I think it's going to be natural that there are questions because of this. So it's good that we're, we're having these meetings. So I think that, I just wanted to make that statement. I think a lot of what you said answered questions that I did have. I just would encourage as we move forward to, you know, if this really is the model for Board of Health that we need, this is a message that, that we need to deliver and hopefully, hopefully, we can come to some agreement with everybody so that there's agreement going into town meeting on this as opposed to having to make arguments. So hopefully, we can have a good discussion continuing tonight and on the 6th as well on this, so.
That would be great. Thank you, Brian, for that. And I, I think that's been the hard message to deliver. In reality, even before COVID hit, we've been having discussions with the board about, once the blueprint came out from, so in the state legislature, the governor put money into assessing local public health across the Commonwealth. As all of you know, we're the only state in the country that does public health this way. We have 351 cities and towns that are all responsible for their own public health. And, and it's, there's, there's quite amount of inequities across each municipality, as you can imagine, because the funding is different and the priorities are different within the communities. And so this special commission that came together in 2016 spent a lot of time looking at data, looking at what's being done across the Commonwealth, what are, where are the needs, what are the gaps? And they produced this blueprint document in 2019. It was published before COVID. And it gave us the structure of moving our local public health to, to a place where we can provide a more comprehensive local public health. Then COVID hit. So the discussions about having these core services started way before COVID. Now COVID just shined a light on it because it then, it then threw everything into overdrive. It's kind of like you're going, you're paddling up a river and all of a sudden you have a hole in the boat. Like, okay, so now what do you do? You're just trying to, to fill the hole and, and keep moving forward. And, and that's what we've been doing. But it doesn't go away. COVID's not going to go away. We're going to be dealing with COVID just like we dealt with influenza. It's going to look different a year from now or two years from now, but it's not going away. There's a potential that we're going to have to be administering booster shots. There's going to, we're going to have to monitor which people got what type of vaccine to know what the needs are. And, and that's just adding another layer to the already, I guess, inadequate public health that we're doing. So COVID just sort of accentuated the gaps that we already had. And, and what the Board of Health is proposing of these three positions is getting us to bare bones, basic. And then hopefully, with grants and shared services grants and additional money that I think will come out of the state health department. I worked for DPH for 20 years, I know a lot of the players there. I know a lot of the direction that they're going. And so I think there will be new money coming out and sustainable money. They, the state legislature knows that without, without sustainable money, it's going to be hard for every municipality to continue at this. So I do think there will be new money, but we don't know what that is. We don't know what it's going to look like. And, and we're just trying to just get us at bare bones so that we have the ability to apply for these grants and to get this additional money to do the epidemiology, to do the community assessments, to do the things that, that, that we should be and our residents should have the availability to do.
Yeah, and you make a good point too with, you know, and in recent years, we've added staffing to fire department, to police department, more recently, youth and family services. And, and those have been challenges each year as well. And, you know, at this time of year, when it comes to the budget, there's a lot of tough questions that are being asked. And I don't think, I think we're treating or we're responding to the request for additional services in a similar manner that we did with police and fire as well. And it's not that, you know, we just want to, you know, push back and say, no, no, no. But, you know, we really need to be able to justify the need for it, knowing that, you know, it impacts this budget, but also budgets moving forward as well. So, and, you know, we did try and take the position, you know, new staffing, unless an identified funding source could be, could be found for it. And it's, with that challenge comes departments coming, looking to us saying, hey, you know, this is, this is really the core staffing level where we need to be at. So it's a, it's a challenge and appreciate you coming and offering the information that you have tonight. Thank you.
All right, Mr. Stivers.
Thanks, and thanks again, Mary Lou, for articulating that, very helpful. I do have a question related to the shared services opportunity. If we do get that money, is there a time limit on that? Is that for one fiscal year or indefinitely? Or do we know how long that is likely to last? Or do we know how long that is likely to last?
So right now it's, has potential for three years at three hundred thousand a year. And if we get it, it would be shared with four towns. Like I said, there's a minimum of three towns that are needed to actually apply. We don't know if we'll get three hundred. I mean, they could give us a hundred and fifty because we're only four towns. We did participate in a lot of conversation with the Metro West group. A lot of the Metro West towns already feel like they have core funding. They need help with a lot of the other services. And we had discussions of whether we could apply in two different shared service grants. The recommendation was no, that it would be helpful if you could be with one, you have a, you know, better chance of getting it. I think these four towns are for abutting communities that have a lot of potential for sharing services. Northborough, Boylston, and actually Westboro also have a huge need for nursing services. With us, if we are able to sustain this full-time nurse, maybe that's not where we use the shared services so much. Maybe it's more an inspectional services. That's remains to be seen. It also is how much money we get will determine, you know, what other public health services we can do. Can we do more with epidemiology? Can we do more with, you know, those community assessments pieces? I think we don't know, but it's a quick turnaround. It's a, like I said, it's an April one submission date and they plan to fund by May. They, they want to get a good chunk of this money out by June thirtieth. So I, I think we'll see money quickly and we'll, we'll see where it shakes out. If Northborough is the lead on this, it's a lot of, they're gonna, there, there needs to be a governing body. So we should have one vote in how things, you know, really get distributed. But that all needs to get worked out. I mean, it, it, when you, when you're working with something with such a short timeframe, it's hard to get in. The weeds are what really determines how successful you are. And, and we're not able to get into the weeds at this point. We're just trying to figure out which towns can work together. Are they, do they have shared services that we can agree on? The Metro West group fell apart because they couldn't come to agreement as to what the shared services were that they wanted to apply for.
All right. And also it's my understanding that per your prior previous point about differentiation between regionalization and shared services. By my count, as I've worked with you folks and looked at the state laws for what the Board of Health is supposed to be doing, I counted something like seventy-five different functions assigned to the Board of Health, some of which don't apply to us necessarily. But there's a lot of reporting and other kind of activity in there. And it seems to me that there's still considerable opportunity as I've listened to your board talk about regionalization in addition to the shared services opportunity. Is that accurate?
Yeah, that's accurate. I mean, I think the board is open to whatever's going to be the best for Southborough and Southborough residents. When we think about regionalization, that's why I said the shared service is a great opportunity to see how we work with those three other cities, the three other municipalities. Can we work together? What are the services that we feel that we need? We being almost a hundred percent septic, we're different than other towns. I mean, you have to look at the food establishments that we have, you know, what are the, what are the food inspection requirements? You know, that analysis is going to help us really determine where, where, where our overlaps are and where our needs are. And, and it, and it's going to give us the opportunity to start to generate those regionalization conversations. When you think about regionalization with another town that maybe we have mutual needs, you have to think about liability issues, HR issues, authority issues. If you're working with another town that has an appointed board versus an elected board, those all have to be factored in. So we're open to having all of those discussions. But I, my point is, it's going to take a lot of discussion and the shared services gives us a chance to sort of cover some of those services and then start to investigate some of the other opportunities that might exist down the road.
Good point. And I think I see a connection to that, to Marty's earlier point about how you think about a phased approach to staffing as well and that that one model might be to say that the positions you've proposed here are the core services. And then on top of that, longer term, there are other potential staffing issues that the shared services thing might teach us more about as far as what's needed there. So I think that, again, all fits together pretty nicely. I have two other quick comments. One, in terms of things that the board is doing now, I think there are a lot of reporting things that need to be done across the entire range of services. And that's where I see a lot of pressure on the administrative support. And I think the other thing that I, I'm concerned about is the HIPAA requirements for Protected Health Information Privacy. And that's one of the things that my day job has had me doing for the last fifteen years or so. And I think there is real exposure if you don't do that carefully. And I think you can get into trouble if you have things like shared administrative functions and opportunities for people from other departments to wander by and, and see protected health information in circumstances where they shouldn't be seeing it. I think we're pretty low on the radar for enforcement for that kind of stuff. But in fact, if you do it improperly and you get caught, that can be a very expensive proposition. So I think it's worth being particularly cautious with HIPAA relative to the administrative procedures internally and keeping that sort of in-house, if you will, as opposed to sharing those kind of positions. But again, I think this is very helpful and informative and thanks for coming in.
All right, Ms. Brascio.
Good evening, Mary Lou. Thank you for coming. I have a ton of questions for you. I'm not going to bombard you tonight. Some things that I think are useful, I'm, I'm, I'm not there yet. I'll be honest with you. I haven't, I'm, I'm just not there yet. So one of the things that we keep talking about, and I know Sam briefly touched on it a little bit, is, you know, all of these core services and what we're not doing. And that really, in, in my mind at this point, I listened to advisory and it hasn't really been answered yet. So I, I think maybe coming into April sixth, if, if you could have, you know, something in advance or even a slide you can just put up to, to, I just don't understand, again, why all of a sudden it's, it's the need to increase these part-time positions to full-time positions in full. So I'm not quite there yet. I'm sympathetic to what COVID has shown the Board of Health. There, there, there's no question about that. I think COVID's been tough. I did a little bit of research and I, and I think there's a lot of towns that are facing the same dilemma. You know, that are in the same boat that we're in right now. I mean, nobody expected COVID to come along and it showed a lot of cracks in the foundation. Not just because of COVID, but cracks that were there prior that maybe didn't get the attention or we didn't notice. You know, that, that happens a lot. So that, that's one of the things I would, I'd like to understand. Obviously, I think this is a great step, having a conversation. And I think that's what's going to be needed for town meeting, you know, for everybody to understand what it is that you need, what the challenges are. The, the three positions, and I understand that they were part-time and you're just making them full-time, but with the benefits. I know you had mentioned the police, you know, we had phased the police. We had done that over three years. We had phased youth and family. Brian had mentioned that as well. So I'm not quite sold yet on doing it all at once and the need for doing it all at once versus is doing a phased-in approach. I, I appreciate that regionalization is still on the table. I think the taxpayers benefit from exploring every option. And, and I appreciate that the grants that you've talked about as well. One of the tough things is, I, I, I think if we went to every department and we said, what are your needs? What are your core services? I would bet you there'd be a light at the door of departments needing things. And that's not to say what the Board of Health does isn't very important and it is needed. It's just, again, I think that's the challenge is, is in making some of the taxpayers understand, you know, this is a tough budget year for a lot of families. There's been a lot of changes in, in, in jobs. I know I've gotten a few calls from people begging not to increase the taxes. So I think that's a challenge for all of us. That's not to say it's, it's a hurdle that can't be overcome, but I, I think we have time to get answers to the questions and be able to, you know, educate the public on, on what it is you need. Because I just don't think at this point, I don't know. So I, I would just ask that for April. You know, and I would be happy to submit some other questions to you in advance, you know, of that meeting. So, you know, you could certainly be prepared to answer them.
We're welcome. Like any questions you have that's going to help that April sixth meeting go and, and answer your questions, please send them to me. I mean, we're open, what, whatever you need. I am trying to figure out, and this has been the challenge, of what is required of a local health department? How do you put that in a simplified format to get out? Or I'm trying to figure out a way, can we put it in a table that we can say, we're doing this, we're partially doing this, we're not doing this at all? And I'm trying to get that in a table so that it's, anybody can understand it. But there's also other pieces that, all of the, the list of things that the Health Department needs to know about. Now, that may not occur in twenty twenty-one, but it may occur in twenty twenty-two. So you better know what the regulations are. You better know what you need to do. When you get a call from a resident saying, I have a rabid bat in my house and I can't get rid of it, how do I know what to do with it? So, you know, you have to know what the rules and the regulations. Do I go there? Do I get the bat? Do I package it up? Do I send it to the state lab? How do I, do the people in the house need to get vaccinated? Like you have to know a lot of information about what to do when that happens. You know, when public health is working at its best, it's invisible. You don't know. You know, it's, it's safe water, it's safe air, it's safe, all, all of these things. You know, that, that when, when you don't hear about it, you don't know. But when a disaster or something happens, when we had this foodborne illness outbreak in the past month, you don't, you didn't know that. You don't know what, but, but the Health Department is working hard to ensure that those people are not going to work and not infecting other people. And, and so it, it's far-reaching. Our communication needs to get better. Our communication needs, we need to have risk communication. We need to have a way to inform residents in a way that's not scary, that's easy to understand, that they know what public health does. Because that's what became very evident to me as I started working with boards. And, I mean, I've been in town for thirty years, but I, like getting involved in all of the weeds here and, and helping. I, I honestly was shocked because I live public health. I, I've worked it for my whole life. And so I was just shocked at how little people really understand about what their health department does and should do. So I agree with you. And if there's a way that you can think of a way to frame that so that our residents do understand, almost anyone I talk to is like, what do you mean? We have to do this. This affects every resident in the town of Southborough. It's not like, you know, a, a fire affects one family. So you want to have enough fire equipment to affect that family when it is affected. Well, public health affects every resident in town at, at different points. And so how do we communicate that in a way? And how do we communicate all the things that we do behind the scenes so that you don't know how we're keeping Southborough safe?
And I, I appreciate that, Mary Lou. And, and again, I, I appreciate the conversation. And this was in no way meant to be critical of what's being done or, or where you're looking to go. It, it's just trying to get information. And I think you said it the best. The Board of Health has typically been silent. It's been quiet. You do a lot of things that nobody knows what you do. And I think that's, that is the challenge in, you know, getting the word out there. You know, I'm sure Mr. Stivers has some ideas how we could certainly put together some list. I mean,
Maybe a red line.
But I, I, I think, you know, you're on the right track with getting information out. I just think, you know, that there are people that do have questions, myself being one. So I, I think we have an opportunity here. I think collaboration is certainly the key. It's always the key in getting things done. So I thank you and I will certainly send some of my, my questions over to you. But again, thank you for coming and having the discussion.
All right, Lisa, thanks. And, and Mary Lou, we're, we're, we are not at a decision-making juncture tonight. So I think you've got, got, gotten a sense that, that, I mean, on the one hand, we've got our own questions. We're also trying to channel what are likely to be questions. You know, in, in a town meeting set, setting, we've also seen some of the questions that advisory asked. So, you know, when we're back on the sixth and we are at least closer to a decision-making point, I think you've got a sense. I, I, I would just say that I think that, that in, in very, very concise, digestible form for me, I think for the other members of the committee and for the, ultimately the town, it's, it's, it's a twofold discussion. It is number one, why are these core services and why do we need them? And this is going to be a significant increase for the Board of Health budget that will have an impact on taxes. And, and that is, that is a second element to the discussion that you really have to keep in mind. It's not simply of, I mean, you make a very compelling case that these are important services, these are services we need. That's not the end of the discussion. That's part of the discussion. Okay?
Yep. Thank you for having me. And like I said, in the future, if you have questions that are Board of Health related, please reach out. And so a, a, a board member can come to your meeting and explain what, what we're thinking, what we're brainstorming about. It, it's much better having it direct than having it, you know, second and third hand. So I'm, you know, please reach out. We want to work together. I wish that, I wish Southborough did a better job at, I, I think having Sam as liaison to the Health Department. Since I've been on the board, this is the first time that I know of. And so that's, that's a great step in moving forward and, and communicating more between boards and committees. It is so important to making sure that we're all on the same page and we're all looking at, at what's important. I mean, each of our boards have expertise. And, and so sharing those with others who are making decisions is so important going forward. And so thank you for, for asking me to come. And I, I look forward to working together and trying to figure out a solution that's going to get Southborough residents what they should have and, and from a public health perspective.
All right, Mary Lou, thank you very much. Have a good night.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to item four, reports. And just, I'm going to add another item onto my chairman's report. It has to do with some emails that Mr. Purple sent out yesterday about Chestnut Hill Farm. And I'll just update what, what, others may already be aware of it, but just to, to let you know what's going on with that. The first is, is an update on Barron versus Town of Southborough litigation. That was in everybody's packet. The, the court's decision was pretty self-explanatory. It is, it's not, it's not unprecedented. It's maybe not even extraordinary, but it's pretty unusual for an entire case to be rejected, dismissed at the, the, the earliest possible stage. And that's for a lot of different reasons. Basically, what, what the, the, the burden that is applicable in a case like this is that, is that the allegations by a plaintiff, in this case, the, the Barrons and a couple of other citizens are accepted as true. In other words, if everything you say is true, are these claims that you've made against the Board of Selectment, against the town, against individually, against Mr. McCollenda as well as, as Mr. Shea and Ms. Brascio. Assuming everything you say is true, have you alleged actionable claims? And really the resounding answer by the court was, no, you have not. And so it's, it's a terrific thing for the board. It's a terrific thing for the town. It's a terrific thing for the individual members that that litigation is behind us. There's a right of appeal. I told Mr. Davis that at some point we may have him come in and just talk to us about both the right of appeal and also the very slim, but at least have him update us. You know, a, a prevailing party in certain circumstances has the right to seek attorney's fees. I'm not sure that these are those circumstances, even though we are, again, across the board a prevailing party. I guess the final thing I will say is that we've had discussions before about whether or not we want to modify the, the public discourse policy that we adopted. And the court focused on that and, and basically endorsed the policy, said there's nothing wrong with it. But addressed it from a twofold standpoint. Number one, that the, 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 the first part of it, the substantive part of it is fine in any sort of, of, of constitutional analysis. The second part is potentially, potentially- The second part is potentially, potentially problematic because it gives, it gives a board, not this board, and not in this instance, but it could give the board the, the ability to act in a way that is contrary to someone's First Amendment rights. Again, that didn't happen here. The board acted entirely properly. But it's a problematic couple of sentences that we, again, we've talked about it before. And I, I still think it, maybe we can talk to Mr. Davis about this when he comes in. It might make sense for us to, to knock those couple of sentences out. Marty? Yeah, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Do you have an opinion, is this ruling, does it establish any useful case law precedent? So if we didn't make that change in the policy, if somebody else has a similar complaint, we could say the courts have decided this, so we don't need to worry about it? Or is that not all that useful?
No, it's not, you know, it's, it's not entirely how it works because every, every case is different. And again, what was decided here is, is looking at the four corners of the complaint. The specific allegations of the complaint have actionable claims been pleaded. A different complaint could, could include additional facts and the like. So, so it's got, it's got precedential value in the sense that you've got a, it's a very well-written opinion. And you've got a, it's a very good sort of roadmap about what the law is for us to be mindful of in terms of interactions and public comment and the like. It's useful in that respect, but every case is going to have, you know, slightly to greatly different allegations. So it doesn't have that much of a, of a, of a going-forward effect. Does that make sense?
We still should think about possibility of updating the policy then potentially.
Yeah, no, I think, again, I've always thought that updating the policy makes sense. Just because it, again, you know, Sam, you and I are two years and Lisa and Brian longer. It just, it just hasn't come into play. And if it's not going to come into play and we're not going to have to worry about how to apply it, then I think we should think about getting rid of it altogether.
Yep. Thanks.
Anyone else want to weigh in, Lisa or Brian or Chelsea? No?
Tell John, thanks, good job.
He did, he, you know, both on the papers and on the, the argument, I watched the argument. He did a very, very nice job. And, and I already talked with him and I told him that. So. The second thing is, again, folks may have seen that there was a letter from the trustees that oversee Chestnut Hill Farm about the possibility of them seeking a grant from the federal government for some of the, the infrastructure money that is going to be coming down the pike. And seeking, they were seeking support from both US Representative Clark as well as Representative Dykma and Senator Eldridge. And the, Mark sent out an email asking, I don't know if other folks weighed in with, with Representative Dykma. I had a conversation with her, I had some suggestions. She ended up sending out a, a letter. I'm not sure, I saw it earlier today, Mark, did other folks get it? Did you get a copy of it?
I didn't see it.
Okay. It just, we can send, basically what it says is, it's a supportive letter for the trustees to pursue the grant. And it was one of the things I emphasized with her, just underscoring that, that the trustees had already been in contact with, with the town and town officials. And obviously, any sort of, of grant and any, any construction, any sort of, of work on Chestnut Hill Farm that is a result of any sort of grant, obviously we'll have to follow the normal town processes and approvals. And so that was included in Representative Dykma's letter to Representative Clark, supporting from a state perspective, the request for federal funding. If all that makes sense. So we'll make sure, Mark, make sure, again, I saw that letter early this afternoon from Representative Dykma. It was pretty straightforward and I think completely unobjectionable.
Yeah, I just forwarded that out to the full board.
Okay, great, thanks. That's it for me, and next up is Members Reports, Boston cane.
That's me.
Yeah, Marty, go ahead, sorry.
Sorry, thank you. So, years ago, back in 1909, the Boston cane was distributed to communities in Massachusetts. It was gold at the time, it had a gold top on it. We actually have it, it's in the vault downstairs, it's, it's kept safe. The, we had replicas made of this prior to me, just prior to me getting on the board, so we had them. We restarted doing this, this program again. Why we did the replicas was you never want to lose the original cane and the history that goes with it. This way, on the unfortunate passing of our oldest resident that gets the cane, we're not intruding on the family and trying to get the cane back. So we had replicas made, they're beautiful. Since I've been on the board, we've presented it twice. We gave it to Mrs. Ware and in August of 18, Carolyn Pescini. And unfortunately, she passed in April of 20, COVID hit. So I started inquiring again through the senior center who our oldest resident is. We currently have a female resident who's 99 years old. I'm not going to give her a name out just yet. She's 99 years old, she turns 100 early next year, and she's a veteran. So I just wanted to put this on everybody's radar. I'm talking to Pam and working with Pam, and we're going to put something together to bring back to the board. We had a couple ideas of how to be able to honor her. But again, we haven't had the conversation with her family yet. You know, we weren't sure how mobile that she was. So we're kind of leaning at this point to potentially picking a date and having her come to the senior center, obviously trying to be COVID-conscious, and doing some type of drive-through where residents of the town could come through, the fire department, the police department, the Board of Selectment could participate, our veterans could participate, you know, and just allow everybody to come and honor this, this amazing resident that, you know, will be turning 100 next year, but she is our oldest resident. So I just wanted to put that on everybody's radar. There'll be more coming about that. It's a great program and I'm excited for everybody to participate in that as well. So that's it.
All right, great. Great stuff. I'll have to tell my, my mom is 95 and going strong. So I'll have to tell her that, that if she wants a cane, she's going to have to move in with us. Anything else on Members Reports? There's nothing else listed but anything else come up in the last couple of days? No? Okay, Mr. Purple?
Mr. Chairman, I have listed COVID update, but I really think that we spent 45 minutes covering a lot of that. And I think that Mary Lou spoke to the, to the Regional Vaccination Clinic. I know that at this point, the town administrators have kind of been cut out of the weekly meetings. It's come down to the fire chief or the emergency management director and also the health agent or the public health directors. And again, we're approved, waiting on vaccine and hoping that the first week of April potentially starts to bring us in some vaccine. I know that I've had conversations with Dr. Alker and Chief Achilles and fully prepared to use the, while we don't have, as, as Mary Lou had said, Board of Health staff, we do have great resources in terms of our paramedics, who, we have, I believe, 19 of them who are trained to, to give the vaccine. And we also have great resources on our medical reserve corps and our CERT team. So, you know, we'll keep you posted as we get closer and once we get vaccine. However, I did want to cede the rest of my time, if it's okay with the board, to Mrs. Hale, so she can give a little bit of an update on the one-stop grant. So we've been doing some more work on that. And I just figured it'd be great for the board to hear a little bit more.
Is Ms., is Ms. Reynolds? No, I don't see her in the, in the queue. All right, I'll make sure I send her an email if I listen to this. All right, go ahead, Vanessa, thanks.
Sure, thank you. So I just wanted to update the board that we have gotten access to the one-stop portal from state officials. I've entered a lot of our organizational and community-related information that was required. Tomorrow, we'll be sending out to the three parties that have an expression of interest, as you know, ready to go. You know, the form that they need to fill out, there is some required information that they need to insert relative to, you know, the scope of their project, what their steps would be to implement their project and so forth. So keeping in line with the deadline of April 1st that the state has said we should be, done well in time, we'll be sending that additional information out to those parties tomorrow.
What are those, Vanessa?
It's a series of questions, Mr. Stivers. It is required as part of the portal to submit the expression of interest form.
What are we applying for? Remind me if you would.
Sure. So it's the three projects that was, that were discussed at the last meeting. CHOPC was one, DPW, Ms. Galligan had another, and EDC was the third party that was submitted in expression of interest.
Nothing else has come to light since our last meeting?
I'm sorry, yes, no, there has been no further interest in an expression of interest since the last selectments meeting.
Thanks.
Sure.
Okay, yeah, go ahead, Chelsea.
So do you need this for the letter of intent that's due next week? Is that the deadline for this, Vanessa?
Well, it's, it's more of submitting the information through the one-stop portal that the state has set up. So there is some information that is required to be submitted by each of those three parties, which is what will be circulating tomorrow. So it's not necessarily a single letter of intent. It's uploading information into the portal and then clicking submit before April 1st.
So the Route 9 project that had three parties that were interested, and how are we coordinating feedback from Mam? And do they know that they need to meet to get this back over to you?
That's what we're going to be sending out first thing tomorrow morning, so they have enough time to do that.
Okay, so do we need to coordinate CHOPC, EDC, and Capitol?
Um.
Are you going to kind of, kind of put it all together?
I'm going to kind of put it all together and, and then, you know, facilitate pulling that information together. I don't know that any of those committees need to formally meet again, but that's what Mark and I will be finalizing first thing in the morning.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
And just remember, Vanessa, that, that while, while I've been missing in action so far, I'm available to help out on the board side with that.
Great.
And my schedule is not bad the next few days, so I'm available to help out.
Okay, super, thank you.
All right.
I think Vanessa had sent you an email, Marty.
Yeah, no, she reminded me.
Just to give you, to give you a thought on, just so you know, you're firmly on the hook.
Okay, fair enough.
Thank you.
Is that it, Mark?
Yes.
For your report, okay. Item five, consent agenda. All right, do I, do I feel lucky tonight? Are there any holds?
E, E, please.
Okay.
You don't have A, do we?
No, A and C.
An F for me, please, Marty?
All right, so B, B and D seem to have survived. So I will.
I'll move B and D.
I'm sorry?
I'll move approval of B and D.
Second.
Second, yeah, this is Brascio's second discussion. None, Ms. Brascio?
Aye.
Ms. Malinowski?
Aye.
Mr. Shea?
Aye.
Mr. Stivers?
Aye.
Mr. Healy is aye. So B and D are approved. Open session minutes, item A. That was, Ms. Malinowski?
Yeah, we don't have them yet, I don't think.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'd ask that those be tabled, please, given the fact that we're meeting weekly and the length of some of the meetings, it's a little bit difficult to try to, to try to get those done and turn them around as quickly. So we'll have those for the, for the next meeting.
Okay, C, building permit fee schedule revisions.
That was me. So I had some questions and if I could ask Mr. Purple to kind of tee this one up?
Sure.
Clarification.
Yeah, thank you for that handoff. So it was, so this was a little bit part and parcel, I think, of the whole discussion last time that Mr. Ballantyne discussed in terms of the fee review. And so FIRE had submitted their permit fee schedule revision and, and building had done the same. And I think one of the things that, that I found in, in conversation that was not entirely clear, we do have a revolving fund for inspectional services. That fund is used for the portion of the electrical gas or plumbing permit. When that is, when, when those are inspections are done, the portion of the fee from those permits that is applicable to paying the inspector for doing the inspection goes into that revolving fund. There's also a portion of the technology fee which helps to pay for the, for the online permitting software, which was established in 2015. And so the increase that is being sought in the building permit fee schedules, and again, these are FY '22, so it would begin on July 1st. The increase that is being discussed, that amount of money, you know, is not going into the, along with the technology fee, is not going into the revolving fund to pay the inspectors. That is going to go into the general fund and would be, would be looked at as local receipts. So I wanted to provide at least a little bit of clarification that we're not simply making an increase to the fee and then it all goes into a revolving fund, which really doesn't help in terms of additional local receipt generation.
Okay, I think I understand that. Okay, is that, Ms. Malinowski, did you have, refer to Mr. Purple because you had questions about it? Or because you had questions about it that you forwarded to him earlier just to update all of us?
Yes, so I had questions earlier that he gave me that answer on. And I said, I think that would be helpful for everyone to know.
Okay, got it, all right.
It didn't look scripted at all, I thought it came off beautifully. But no, I thought, I thought it was, it was, it was a good question and I thought that the answer benefited the board, so there you go.
All right, does anyone have any follow-up to that? Okay, so are we ready to move that item?
I move that we accept item C on the consent agenda.
I'll second that. Discussion none, Ms. Brascio?
Aye.
Ms. Malinowski?
Aye.
Mr. Shea?
Aye.
Mr. Stivers?
Aye.
Mr. Healy is aye, that is approved unanimously. We are on to E and F. Did you hold both of those, Brian?
I held F, I believe somebody else held E.
I held E.
Are you not, are you not going to let Kathy out, Lisa?
Nope. So I just wanted to take a second, seeing as, as, obviously, I've, I've served on Capitol with Kathy. And I just wanted to express the gratitude for taking on an additional responsibility, an additional committee on top of being on advisory and also the, what she brought to the school research subcommittee. I just wanted to thank her and commend her for the job she did and let her know that she will be missed. That is all.
Yep. Well said, and, and I think it's, the main reason I think that she's, the, the timing particularly of the resignation is so that there's not a conflict between her role on Capitol and her role on advisory in terms of considering warrant articles and the like for town meeting.
Correct, they needed it for the votes, for, for the warrant, yeah.
Yep. Did you have something else, Sam?
No, I second that. Great service from Kathy, appreciate it.
Okay, with that, then, Lisa, you are going to move to accept the resignation of Kathy Cook from Capitol.
Grudgingly, yes.
All right, I'll second that as well. Discussion none, Ms. Brascio?
Aye.
Ms. Malinowski?
Aye.
Mr. Shea?
Aye.
Mr. Stivers?
Aye.
Mr. Healy is aye. Kathy, you are not on Capitol planning anymore. And finally, the executive session minute release from November 10 and November 17, 2020.
So one thing that I noted, so the minutes from November 10th, we approved them in January 19th, I believe, of this year. Give me one sec. The, one thing that I noticed in reviewing them to, for release, Ms. Brascio was absent at that meeting, which is why we then discussed that matter again on the 17th. But in, at the minutes note that she's absent, but in the roll call vote to go into executive session, it's a 5-0-0 vote and Ms. Brascio was included. So that was an oversight that we missed at the time. And I'm wondering if, I'm not looking to make any material changes to the minutes, I'm just looking to correct that administrative oversight and edit those minutes from November 10th to note that the vote to go into executive session should have been 4-0-0 and take away Ms. Brascio's vote.
Yeah, I don't even think we have to vote on that, that's just correcting an error in the minutes. That's, that's apparent on its face.
Yeah.
Okay.
So with that, I will move release of the executive session minutes with the administrative correction to the minutes from November 10th. So that we release the executive session minutes from November 10th and November 17th, both in 2020.
Second.
Second, Mr. Stivers, discussion? None?
Marty, if I may, can, can we split that motion?
I was just thinking the same thing.
Wasn't at the 10th, I'm going to abstain from that vote.
So what, we'll, so, so what, why don't we just amend that, that motion to first focus on, on the same motion but only for November 10th? I will, I'll, I'll make that, move to make that amendment.
Second.
All right, discussion none. So first, the amendment. Ms. Brascio is abstaining, correct?
Yes.
All right. Ms. Malinowski?
Aye.
Mr. Shea?
Aye.
Mr. Stivers?
Aye.
Mr. Healy is aye. We've made that amendment to the motion. Now the main motion for November 10th. Ms. Brascio is abstaining. Now, the main motion for November 10th, Ms. Bracio is abstaining. Mr., uh, Ms. Malinowski?
Aye.
Mr. Shea?
Aye.
Mr. Stivers?
Aye.
Mr. Healy is aye. So, uh, November 10 is now approved and released, and the motion has already been made by Mr. Shea for November 17th for approval and release. And did you second that, Mr. Stivers?
I think so. If I didn't, I do now.
All right, fair enough. Discussion on Ms. Bracio?
Aye, thank you.
Ms. Malinowski?
Aye.
Mr. Shea?
Aye.
Mr. Stivers?
Aye.
Mr. Healy is aye. So so those are approved and voted released unanimously for November 10th with an abstention by Ms. Bracio for November 17th. Abstention from Ms. Bracio for November 10th. All right, we're done with item five, consent agenda. On to other matters. Town administrator evaluation. Obviously, the the written materials were all included in the the packet. Um, we also are quite close in time to the last time we had reasonably fulsome discussion with Mr. Purple about his evaluation and our thoughts. And it's also my understanding that Mr. Purple's had the opportunity to discuss individually with various members of the board, their comments and evaluations. So with that being said, I I will go first and say I am perfectly content resting on the written evaluation that I provided, and I'll next go to Ms. Bracio.
I as well.
All right, then I will go to Ms. Malinowski.
Yes, me as well.
You're also as well?
Yes.
All right, so finally, Mr. Shea.
Myself as well.
Mr. Stivers?
My written comments express my feelings on the issue.
Okay. Um, so, Mark, do you have anything? Again, you you and I have talked, and my understanding, based on those conversations, is that you've had the opportunity to talk with other members of the the board individually. The evaluations and the comments and the ratings are all very much part of the public record. Do you have any additional comments or responses that you want to make part of the record tonight?
Well, I think, like I said, I do appreciate that several members had reached out to me and and, uh, you know, we had we had substantive conversations, I think, about the evaluations. Again, uh, you know, we talked a lot about these things last time. Um, I do appreciate that in some of the areas where there were some concerns several months ago when we talked about this, there were things that, um, uh, you know, again, from any 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 failures or any, you know, things that are less than perfect, there's always opportunities to grow from those. And and I think that, um, you know, and a lot of things are moving in the right direction. And, uh, you know, again, I I appreciate the comments, I appreciate the feedback, and it just, you know, continues to push me to work harder to to make sure that we get it all right. So, but I make I make no promises that we're not going to make missteps as we try to move things forward. So, but no, I I appreciate the conversation. Thank you.
All right, though, the one additional thing I will say is that, and I had this conversation with with Mr. Purple, the the, through no fault of his own, but the contract that we're currently operating under is not, in my view, a model of clarity in terms of dates and the like. But I think for purposes of the requirements for consideration of, it's not really a renewal, but 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 pursuing an additional contract, I think by having the review tonight, we have sort of checked off that box. And I don't I don't think there's any other box we have to check off, um, at least in other additional meetings down the line. And Mark, most of that can be accomplished in conversations between you and me. And Lisa, I expect you'll be a part of those as well, and those are just known. And and we'll advise the board about any notices either that Mr. Purple gives us or that we give Mr. Purple consistent with the requirements of the contract. Is everybody comfortable with that approach?
Yeah, Marty, can can we just clarify what our choices are at this point relative to notices and so forth? My read is that we've got three choices, in terms of the board saying, yes, we want to extend, no, we don't, or silence, which effectively extends the agreement for an additional year. Is that the choice we have?
I think the main choice we have is 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 a requirement with a, uh, and again, depending on how you read the contract, either a six month or a seven month notice to let Mr. Purple know if we are not inclined to engage in discussions with him for a, again, renewal's the wrong word, for a continuation of his contractual relationship with the town. Based on my view of the of the evaluations, I don't get the sense, and no one's made a motion to that effect, that there is a, um, an inclination to pursue that sort of a notice to Mr. Purple. If I'm wrong about that, then that's something we should definitely put on for an agenda. I I again, I think it it probably, the the most reasonable interpretation of the contract is there would be a six month notice provision for that, which would put us at the 17th of April. So, but again, having not heard a motion to that effect as part, you know, as part or a follow up to the evaluation, that's really the only thing, because if that's not given, then one of two things just happens. We engage in discussions with Mr. Purple for a re-upping of a contractual relationship with the town, or we simply let it lapse. If it lapses, then it's got an automatic one year renewal of the contract. Presumably, though, if 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 we're not going to take action to not pursue re-upping with Mr. Purple, then I don't think we're just gonna let it lapse.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, and and that's helpful. I mean, again, I read the tea leaves here as well. I mean, I, as you saw, my position is to not renew, but I don't think there's votes for that, apparently. So, um, I think we move forward as you suggest and figure out what the board wants to do next.
I don't think we need to vote on what I what I've laid out, but are but is that the path that folks are comfortable with, that I will, um, with Ms. Bracio have conversations with with Mr. Purple? I don't feel a, again, we're we're seven, just sort of seven months out from the the expiration. Again, it's an oddly, it's an oddly framed contract, but from the expiration of the contractual term set out in the contract, which differs from the 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 arithmetic term of the contract based on the signatures. But anyway, that's contract law.
I would, I would hope we could actually do a tighter contract if it does get renewed here to, you know, clarify some of these things that aren't nearly so clear in there.
Yeah, I think I I think that that's a that's a that's a worthy endeavor. Uh, but I don't see anybody, um, um, rejecting the notion that I laid out for the way for us to go forward here.
I just have one question, Marty.
Yep.
Does it mean that we have to have a, uh, an agreed contract by April 17th or that we are pursuing that? Um, and there's really no timetable on when we need to have it kind of locked down?
For, again, the only thing that would have to happen by April 17th is if we were not going to pursue
Okay.
discussions about the re-upping of a contract.
Okay.
Um, but there's nothing in the contract that says the the formulation or a draft or or some other preliminary step in the in the the creation of the next contractual relationship has to be done on April 17th. All we're dealing with, once once the determination is made not to give notice of potential termination, then the only thing is, um, October 17th is the expiration of the contract. And either either a contract is, a re-upped contract is in place by then, there's an agreement to extend the time because discussions are ongoing and we haven't finalized things by October 17th, or there's not agreement, there's not a a, um, uh, a re-upped contractual agreement. And in that case, what the contract calls for is a one year extension of the contract. Again, it's not, it is it is not a model of clarity. So, but but that's that's the way that the 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 tiers, if you will, of the contract are are laid out.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. All right, I am going to move on. There's no other vote that's required for item 6A. And so we're on to our penultimate, um, other than second round of public comment, um, item of the night, um, which is a review of the May 22nd, 2021 town meeting warrant articles. Now, um, I'm sure I did what everybody else did, which was to dive back into the warrant articles, remind ourselves and refresh our memories about it. And and I will, it just strikes me that there are, there are at least three possibilities for each of the warrant articles, maybe more than that. Number one is we look at them and we say, they're right. We don't need any more information, and we are comfortable taking a position on them. That's one possibility. The second possibility is to say they're right. And, um, uh, based on a motion and a vote, we determine that we're not going to support that warrant article. For a number of them, um, I think it's important for us to discuss them, but at least my view of them is I want to hear from either the the department, the committee, or maybe the individual who is the proponent of that article. And it's worth us talking about it tonight, but it's not ripe for a a vote and a determination at that juncture. Those are the three possibilities I see. Is is that is everyone else pretty much in accord with that?
One more, maybe?
Okay, what is that, Sam?
Sort of a an offshoot of number three, um, there are some that we just don't have the information for yet. For example, we don't have the SAP in here.
Right.
Others that, again, we need more data for, so those are defer automatically until we get.
I I will, I will call that a subset of three. Um, it's 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 not that we need need to come in and give us more information. We need some information, both on the language of the article and the reasons for it.
There's more, about more than zero or so.
Yeah, something like that.
Yep.
All right, does that make sense to everybody?
Yes, Marty, can I just ask one question? So are you gonna go, is your plan to go through the whole warrant? But and the only reason I ask is I I'm I'm hoping that even though we took positions on some of the articles that came that were indefinitely postponed last meeting, we have a new member on the board, and it might be worthwhile to revote those positions. Is that your intent to go through the whole warrant or just what's new?
Um, no, I was gonna go through all of the, um,
Okay.
all of the, I was gonna go through all of the items. I mean, it's interesting, um, I hadn't thought about the the, um, the articles that are in the annual town meeting. But but you're right, um, our previous votes did not include Ms. Malinowski, um, even on 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 the 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 regular articles. So maybe do something that that, uh, that that Mr. Wilson um, and then Mr. Semino did, and see if if on the articles there are holes and we wanted, if there are reasons for discussing any, because some of them are pretty straightforward, obviously. Does that make sense to go through and see? You know, there's only 43 of them, um, and some of them I can do. You know, for instance, on articles one through six, are there any holes? Is that something that any of those that folks are gonna want to discuss?
So I just had a question on three.
Okay.
Um, and I think it's simple if you just want me to do it now, so, and it may not be an issue.
Well, why don't we do it now? Sure.
Um, is, should the date there be July 1st of 2019?
No, that date needs to be changed. Thank you.
You're welcome. So I assume it's gonna be 21, right?
That is correct.
Okay.
Okay.
Um, how about five, Marty?
Yeah.
SAP. We haven't seen it.
No. No, but that's, and and so that obviously falls into the category of of items that we can't give a yea or a nay vote to right now, because we don't know what we're voting on. I just want to see which ones folks want to talk about. Those are the, that's the main thing I'm trying to find out. Because I don't even know that we have to vote on them tonight. I mean, we've got two months before town meeting. And it might be worthwhile just to see if we want to talk about these tonight, because we are going to be meeting with advisory, you know, give and take with them on a particular article might change our mind. I just want to see which ones, A, we want to talk about among ourselves, but also which ones we, whether it's on on April 6th or a different date, we want to have, um, the proponents come in to give us more information. That's, those are the main things I'd like to accomplish tonight. If folks want to have votes on particular articles, I think we can do that, but I don't think that's as critical as finding out where we are on the articles.
Yep.
And Brian, you were one of the, you were one of the 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 advocates of 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 making sure we got these uh, on our radar sooner rather than later. Is what I just described makes sense to you?
Yes, and I have no comments on one through six.
Okay.
Keep on plugging through. I'm pretty good up to number 20.
Well, I'm I'm gonna do them. So the budget, the budget we're gonna talk about uh, and April 6th and 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 elsewhere, so I don't think we have to dive into that tonight. So then, um, eight, eight through 15, except number nine, because number nine is a new article. Any, um, discussion on those? Okay. Mark, why don't you just remind us on what we are doing with nine? That that is, dealing with that trust point has been something that the board has done in the past, but but is this is a different way to approach it? Is that what Article 9 is?
Exactly. This is, um, so normally, this would be a line item in the inside the budget article. Um, so Article 7, and it's it's carried under the benefits line. And in conversations with, um, the not so new town accountant, uh, she had suggested that this is something that's supposed to be done in a separate article um, in her conversations with Divisional Local Services. So this is simply doing the same thing we've been doing, but just in a different way and breaking it out into a into a separate article.
Okay. Um, is everybody fine with with that approach? Okay, and I just wanted to make make sure that there was clarity about why it was a new article for 2021. All right, next is, um, and one I want to flag, which is Article 16, which is, um, the first of a number of CPA articles relating to administrative. Consistent with what we're doing in our discussions on the legal services side of things. I mean, this is, obviously, the CPA funding is not something the Board of Selectmen controls, and a determination about how to proceed with that is something that's determined by the, um, by that committee. I just think that if, and I'm not sure what form it takes, maybe just a vote by us recommending, maybe not even a vote, maybe just through Mr. Purple recommending that any administrative services provided on some periodic basis be be bid. Um, for the same reason that we chose to do the, um, the legal services. Um, and that is that that, you know, boards, committees, departments, the Board of Selectmen that are, um, that are contracting for services that are paid for by taxpayers' money and CPA is taxpayers' money. I just think that the the best fiduciary practice is to bid those services periodically, so there's an opportunity to weigh and consider if the town's getting the best value for its money.
Is there a threshold for that, over X thousand dollars? Um, seems to me administratively, it could get burdensome for small amounts.
Um, we could make that determination. And again, I don't think for other, particularly for CPA, we don't control that money, so it'd be a recommendation. Um, but again, I just think it's a best practice that really should be followed.
Yeah. But what services do we typically buy, Mark? There, do you know?
I think the only thing at this point, um, is the is is basically the administrative services that I believe Ms. Gillespie is providing to to CPC at this point. Uh, I believe it's probably somewhere in the vicinity of about $12,000 a year.
Okay, I got the impression, listening to some of their meetings, that there are consulting services and the like that are used. Am I wrong about that for purposes of the various preservation restrictions and the like? Or is that not, am I misinterpreting what I'm hearing at those meetings?
I think that a lot of the, um, the the holders of certain restrictions and everything and that, a lot of that is done through council. And so, um, I think that that's been coordinated more through, um, more through ALDO.
Okay. Okay. Um, well, if it's if it's $12,000, um, I'm not sure. That would probably fall below a threshold that I would think is, you know, worth.
I agree.
Yeah, I agree.
Um, but but, um, maybe we can get from Mr. Ballantyne and make sure that. But, but maybe we can get from Mr. Ballton to make sure that, that there aren't some contractual consulting services. I said, maybe I just, I, 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 I thought I heard discussion of consulting services. But Mark, you may well be right that it's, it's, it's consulting through the prism of legal services.
I'll check on that, though.
Okay. That was the only thing I had for 16. I think that 17 and 18 are determinations that town meeting has made in the past, correct? And this is just funding those? Okay. So we are up to number 19, which was, I guess it wasn't last year's town meeting, the one before, maybe even the one before that, was, was exhaustively discussed. So do we have the detail on number 19 yet that we need? Or are they going to be updated? Do you know what?
I believe, and, and my understanding is that they're going to be reviewing all of these articles. And I, I'm not sure whether there's going to be any changes to language. There may be some changes on, on recommendations and whether they're supporting them or not. So I, I think that, I think everything, the way I understand it is, and there may be some others of you that have watched the meetings, is that everything is on the table for consideration. I'll be getting new votes, new language, and new dollar figures for some of these.
So does that mean that it's possible that for some of these CPA articles, that they're not going to be supported by the Community Preservation Committee? Is that a possibility?
I think, I think it, it could be. I'm not sure if there's a difference in, in the vote to bring the articles forward and the vote to support the articles.
Okay. Sorry, a lot of folk, sorry, go ahead, Mark.
No, go ahead. I'm also.
Well, how do people feel about, do we want, is this an article where we want folks from Recreation to come in and talk a little bit more about exactly what the money would be used for? Is there a comfort level based on previous information and discussion?
Marty, I, I think, I, I know a lot of things have changed over since last town meeting, even since before last town meeting. It might be good just to have them come in and discuss the project if there's any changes. And just refresh everybody's memory on what they've done and their comfort level on the number that they have. So I, I think that would be important.
Okay. Chelsea, you look like you were gonna?
Yeah, I had some more comments. I just, you know, I think with what Tim has on his plate, just understanding kind of where this would fall in to his project plans. And then, you know, obviously we, we had one project that came over what was appropriated at town meeting. So just making sure that we're comfortable with that number.
Okay. Okay, so that is a, so Article 19 is one where we're going to want to have Recreation come in to talk with us. Let me do a quick sidebar on that. When do folks think we want to do this? Is this a discussion that we want to have on the 13th for any warrant articles that remain outstanding? Is that from a timing standpoint? It, it seems difficult to fold it into our April 6th meeting with advisory.
Yeah.
We may touch upon some of these articles in that meeting, but it just, that, that, that seems like a, like a tough lift.
I thought advisory was the 13th and the departments were.
Department heads are the 6th, all right. I got those flipped. So maybe it does make sense to do it on the 6th then.
Yeah.
So I, I've, I've completely changed my mind. So it's advisory is the 13th. Department heads are the 6th. So presumably Rec was going to be here anyway. And so we can give them a heads up that we want to talk about Article 19. Next up is the bell tower. And you may remember there was, there was a citizen opposition, I guess is the best way to put it, that was, that was communicated to us about spending money on the bell tower because of, of church-state First Amendment issues. Where are we in terms of that? Is that, I, my, 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 my memory of, I'm not going to say what I thought the consensus was. But regardless of what I think the consensus was, it just strikes me that it makes sense to give the proponents of that article an opportunity to come in and explain the basis for why they think it's, it, it falls outside of any, any First Amendment concerns. And maybe others who want to weigh in on the opposite side of the issue.
Yeah, and just for reference, Marty, we didn't take a position on that. We were going to do that at town meeting, so.
There was a lot of conversation in the CPC about that one as well. And I'd like to hear an update from them in terms of where they stand on it.
Yeah, it's an interesting, I mean, it's a, it's, it's, it's an interesting issue. I think it's a, it's a close call and, and I know there was, there was correspondence that we received from some, some third parties that, outside of South Grove, who, who also weighed in on, on the issue and, and what might happen if, 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 if we took a particular direction. So I think it's, it's obviously worth talking about that a little bit further. Okay. I will go down. I think it's unavoidable not to have additional discussions about the townhouse historical preservation, just based on, I don't know if other folks saw, some are part of the, the CPC's discussion about this issue. But there is, there are differences of opinion, although they ended up voting to support, I believe, the entire number that was requested. But there, there were some differences of opinion with the, with the CPC. And I think it's probably worth us at least understanding what those concerns were and having a discussion about that article as well. Does that make sense to everybody?
Yeah.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, do you also want Mr. Parent, as well as possibly the Chair of the Capital Planning Committee? I know that there was some passionate discussion, you know, supporting the project as well. So I don't know if you want to hear from them.
Why don't we give them the, the option of, 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 of who they want to have come to our meeting on the, the 6th and tell us about where they came down? Again, at the end of the day, they supported the full request. Yeah, was there an extension? I can't even remember.
I, I thought it was, I thought it was unanimous. There was one person who was reluctantly in favor.
Okay. How do you put that down on the tally?
Yes.
Yeah.
Five and a half to one, too.
Yeah. And let them decide who they want to come in and explain. But, but I also, I also think it makes sense to have John here to, to talk about exactly what the work is. And, you know, it's an interesting issue because I'll, I'll give a thumbnail sketch for both, whether you watched it or not, that there was concern that this, this spell, if not entirely on the side, could, could tip over onto the side of maintenance, ongoing maintenance for a facility, as opposed to a, a, an appropriate expenditure of CPA funds for historical preservation. That was the, the gist of the discussion. There were some other minor elements to it, but that was the focus. So I think it's worth, worth it for us to thrash through that a little bit as well. And, and also get Mr. Parent's update on exactly what the work would be that would be covered by the CPA plans that were approved. Next is flag school assessment.
Article 22 and Article 23, that's all I have for information right now.
Yeah, okay, that, that was going to be my question.
Yeah.
The 23 is the trails, right? And I know I've seen their, their petition to, which has been pretty successful, to get to focus on DCR, to get them to, to loosen up some of their restrictions for South Bridge, use of the trails. And I suspect that this is probably tied in somewhat to whether or not they get those restrictions loose.
I think this is, to, to deal with, the DCR wants them to build a fence, I think, alongside the trail to protect what I think is an access point for the, the dam or reservoir system over there. And so there's been conversation about, you know, should the town build a fence on DCR property? And the counter to that one is that, yes, if it gives us access to the trail property there for the citizens to enjoy, they're certainly not perfect. But there's been some back and forth about that issue, I think. So I think it's worth talking about.
We also don't know what it is yet.
Right. And just to, just to mention off of Mr. Stivers' comments, we've been facilitating conversations between the town's insurance company and CPC to try to understand what we can and can't do and what would be covered and not covered. So I think we've been trying to provide CPC some guidance as they, as they put this together.
Okay. Article 24 is TBD, depending on, what is the status of the, the RFP, Mark, for that property?
I believe the RFP is being advertised or being submitted to be advertised this week. And will show up for the first time next week in the advertisement, and then it needs to be in for 30 days.
Okay. So we are talking about the end of April?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, we, we'll have, we'll have some hopefully substantive information for the board to consider. Probably, you know, the, the first, second week of May. So us putting together the motion for the article is going to be tight. But we'll, we, we should have, you know, information for the board to develop a position at that point.
Okay, next up is National Grid Parcel 5440. What is this?
Mr. Chairman, just before we go off on this one, so Article 24, the way that this article is structured is simply based on the way that the disposition of Fayetteville was structured. And, and obviously the motion is not going to look like this. The motion is going to be more specific to one particular, whether it's a proposal or whether it's an approach. So we don't have to do this tonight, but I think that, you know, it'd be good to have a member, you know, work with, work with me to, A, come up with, to make sure that this is the language we want to use. And B, trying to put together a little bit of a summary, explaining, you know, what we're, what we're doing and, and why.
Okay. Is, have you looked back at the Fayetteville article?
I did. And, and essentially this was, this was the same art, the, the structure of this article is the same as it was for Fayetteville.
Okay, so it's a pretty, so, so I, I'm not, Lisa or, or Brian, do you all remember, was there, was there general satisfaction with the way that was, that article was framed? Or did it create some issues? Do you have a general sense?
I don't think the issue is how it was framed, but.
I know there are, I know there are issues. Focus on the article now.
I don't necessarily think so, Brian. I don't know if you have anything.
I'm sorry, I had a little distraction here at home. I missed the last two minutes.
Oh, just, Mark is talking about the South Union and the language for the warrant article. And what we're talking about is whether or not the warrant article that was used for Fayetteville Hall is a, is, is a useful model for, for framing the South Union article, or whether or not there were problems in retrospect with the way it was framed.
No, I think it would be fine. Again, the, the challenge there we had was, you know, we didn't put the property out at the first time. We, we went to town meeting looking for permission to sell the property. Here, we're approaching it the opposite way. We're putting an RFP out ahead of time, then we'll be going to town meeting with more definitive information. So I think that's going to play a bigger factor in, in how this plays out than the wording of the article.
Yeah, I agree.
Brian or Lisa, were either of you involved with, with drafting or sort of deep granular review of, of Fayetteville? No?
I don't recall. I think, if Mark correct me if I'm wrong, but I think that you and, you know, working with ALDO had worked out the, the language for that.
Is there, you know, the, the, the Park Central trial is winding down, although the judge let them know today that they're going to have a very short leash for briefing, which is, that's, that's the downside of a court trial as opposed to a jury trial. You don't just get a decision, you got to start writing stuff. But does that make more sense, Mark, to just have, to, to fold ALDO into the discussion? Or do you want one of us? If you do, I'm, I'm happy to do it.
Well, I think, like I said, I mean, you know, in, in my view, the article simply lets people know what is, is on the table for discussion, but the motion is what you're voting on. So I, I agree with what Mr. Shea said that, you know, I don't think the article was the issue. I think the motion that simply restated the, what the article said, might have been the issue because it was seeking for the selectmen to have full power of disposition without any further review. And the motion that you, that this board, at least my understanding is that you're going to come forward with, is to a specific proposal and a specific number. And, and, you know, that's what you're going to put on the table, which again, is a very different approach than what was taken with Fayetteville. I'm just looking at, so the, so the vehicle, the vehicle will look the same, but the content will look very different in terms of the motion.
Marty, can I make a suggestion? Then again, it's, 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 I, I appreciate you stepping forward. I just, I, Chelsea was involved in the RFP and, and wrote the RFP. And I, I don't know if this is something she would be interested in kind of seeing through, you know, to draft.
I will, I will, I will cede, I will cede responsibility for this, you know, heartbeat.
It, it was just a thought, Chelsea. I don't, I don't know how you feel about it. I just think sometimes when you start something, it's nice to see it through to the end. That's all.
Sure, I'm happy to, to do it.
Yes. I have just given away how much I dislike contract law, so.
I'll connect with Mark on it.
Okay, great. Thanks, Chelsea. And thank you, Lisa. Are we, okay, National Grid. Who keeps talking about National Grid on this board? So Sam, where, what, what is, is this, is this, is this even an article that, that, that we don't have to talk about just indefinitely postponing? I mean, is there something rational, reasonable, possible going on here?
We have a, a, a proposal for National Grid, right, Mark?
So in the conversations with National Grid about this parcel, and, and again, this was something I think that, that Sam had brought up, was born out of the discussions with economic development in the downtown. There's a parcel that National Grid owns, Parcel 5440, which has been under discussion to potentially use for parking for the downtown, potentially use for, to address wastewater in some fashion. A, a lot of different thoughts about it. I had reached out to, to Sonia Hoopolo at National Grid, who was the, the contact for land, land use. And she had said that the town, that, that National Grid would be looking for the appraised value for the property, which it's been a while, but I believe it was $252,100. And I know that conversations with Mr. Stivers, you know, he was thinking, well, look, maybe they'll just give it to us because, you know, there's potential tax incentives and everything in that. And the way it was expressed to me by Ms. Hoopolo was that ratepayer money was used to pay to acquire the property. Therefore, the ratepayers need the return on their investment. So 252,100, 253,100. And we really haven't done anything with it since. There's been no movement on that. I mean, this article is not ready for primetime, has not been considered by Capitol. And, and in all likelihood, I think the, the, the best thing to do at this point is probably to eliminate the placeholder. But that's your call, not mine.
We do have 250 in the governor's economic stimulus bill from late last year for South Grove, which.
Yeah, you have it in that, you have 252 in the capital bond bill.
Yeah.
But you need to, but there's, you know, and we've discussed the capital bond bill. It's a really nice thing to have, but it really doesn't mean a whole lot unless you can make a better case than the hundreds of thousands of dollars of, or millions of dollars of other projects that people have. So, you know, I, I just, like I said, I don't know whether this is really, this is really ready. And, and because there's been no work done on it, post, post those conversations.
Mark, if we, you know, again, we've got this, this, you know, what was, what's the number in the press now? $3 trillion? You know, this, this federal bill coming, or at least attempting to come at some point down the line. If, if, as, and it all has to do with infrastructure, presumably, you know, parking. you know, parking that, that, that cleared up your, your main street so that there was, you know, better bicycle lanes and better sidewalks and stuff like that would fit into an infrastructure bill. If if money were gotten from the federal government through a grant, I'm just thinking in terms of timing now, that using that money, if it were targeted for something like this purchase, would not require us to go back to town meeting. Am I correct about that? Because it's not taxpayer money?
I would have to check on that because it still is the acquisition of property. And I think regardless of the funding source, town meeting still needs to give the Board of Selectmen the authorization to do it.
Even if it's not taxpayer money that's, that's acquiring it?
Even if it's not taxpayer money.
All right, I guess we need, I'm sorry, go ahead, Lisa.
No, and also I don't think capital has reviewed this at all. Um, and I think they would require some pretty concrete information, you know, to.
Oh yeah, no, I'm just thinking in terms of, you know, i- are, is there, is there something that we either could do or need to do about the possible acquisition of that parcel? So that if between town meeting in, you know, uh, May of twenty-twenty-one and our next annual town meeting and hopefully March of twenty-twenty-two, some sort of funding source from the federal government became available so that we would be able to act on it. That's, that's my sort of open-ended question.
So I guess the, I guess the, the open-ended answer would be, you know, eh, would you go to town meeting and kind of ask for the authorization, the Board of Selectmen to have the authorization to acquire the property based on terms and conditions as, you know, you're able to negotiate as you see fit. And then you've got the authority to act upon it. Um, but you don't have a funding source.
But it's so vague and.
That, you know, and, and does that start to generate questions? Well, what are we buying it for? What are we going to use it for?
Yeah.
You know, and it, it starts you down a road that you really can't answer, so.
Okay, fair enough.
I think there's benefit to us, to the town owning this parcel. But my problem with this is we're bidding against ourselves on this. There's no other interested buyer in this property. So, you know, just to agree to the asking, right, part of me just wants to put, you know, a ten thousand dollar placeholder in there and say, do you want to give ten thousand dollars to the rate payers or do you want zero to the rate payers? So let's see if.
You know, the other thing, Brian, is if people, you know, for reasons I don't quite understand freak out about this term. But the town of South Row has the ability to take things by eminent domain. And eminent domain is fair market, market value, not some number that's pulled out of the air as sort of rate payers can't lose money. It's fair market value for the property you acquire. So I mean, that's, that's the other possibility to consider that, that probably, if, again, if the, of course, that obviously would have to be approved by town meeting.
Correct. Yep, and this is not a buildable lot. The access is like ten feet wide back there as a matter of fact.
Yeah, I don't think the market value is two hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
We know the assessor, maybe we could get a revised assessment.
Well, it's, yeah, except the, except it, it ultimately is, if you can't reach agreement, it ends up in court. Basically, you can't, they can't stop us from acquiring the property if we want to do it by eminent domain. The only thing that gets litigated is the cost.
Value, right.
Yep, but, but it's not like they can stop you from taking the property.
Marty.
Discussion.
Based on the, the, the railroad laws, oh, and, and, oh, it's great, it's not CSX, never mind. I take my question back. I was just thinking in relation to where it's at to the track.
But maybe there's some railroad law that, that, that supersedes, who knows?
Yeah, I don't know.
Railroad trumps National Grid. But maybe that's a conversation with the National Grid property person to say, you know, we, we understand what you're saying. On the other hand, um, there are other ways to do this and we don't want to do it in an unfriendly way. So can we find a better way to reach agreement?
Um, so it sounds like, it sounds like the, what is most likely to happen at town meeting is that this is going to be voted to be um, indefinitely postponed.
Yeah.
Okay.
Hey Marty, if we play our cards right, we could probably fit a cycling track back there in that parcel.
A cyclocross? Very tight turns.
So I guess the question is then, do we intend to put this into an article? And leave it on the warrant or are you, are we intending to remove the placeholder tonight?
Oh, good point. Yeah, I'm sorry, I get, you, you, you made that point earlier. I don't see a reason for it to be on the one.
So there's, there's, there's three tonight that I will look to try and, and, and clean up so that again, when we put placeholders on here for certain things in the hope that they, they, they grow up and become real, you know, articles that will vote on a town meeting. And sometimes we put placeholders that just don't, you know, we don't get there too. And, and that was the question I had with this one.
All right, well, Mr. Stivers, you're Mr. Fifty-four forty or Fight, so what do you think? Do we keep it on as a, or, or do we, or do we get rid of it?
Well, I, I think it is unlikely to move forward here. On the other hand, I don't mind leaving a placeholder and say we're advertise we're working on it. And uh, that I think signals the National Grid that we're serious about it as well. But uh, I don't feel strongly about it.
Um, any other thoughts?
So. I, well, I don't disagree with that, Sam. I, 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 I just think it, it creates a lot of questions too as far as process. I would like to take it off, but I would certainly like to see these discussions continue. Um, I'll say the awful word of the room that you never know if there's a fall town meeting in our future. Um, you know, it's, it's something that I think we should be more proactive about. I think it's, it's sat on the radar for a long time and we really haven't done anything, so.
I don't disagree.
Yeah, I think, I think we should do a little bit more legwork on it and um, yeah, I, 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 I don't know what the answer is, but.
My issue is simply it hasn't been moving. I'd like to do something to uh, get it to resolution one way or the other. And I think National Grid ought to be in a position to be a little more uh, negotiating friendly on this thing, but.
I agree, Sam. I, I think, I think my inclination is to take it off and, and I believe you, I'd love to get a hold of that property. I don't think it's worth two hundred and fifty grand. I, um, um, so I think that, that there's going to have to be pressure points applied to National Grid. I'm not sure if, if having it on as an article at town meeting really advances that at all. All right, I don't see any disagreement, so Mark, I think that one is gone.
Okay, I agree.
In, in deference to James K. Polk, isn't he the guy, is, is he the fifty-four forty or Fight guy?
That's right, and it turned out to be like forty-six forty or whatever. He, he didn't get most of Canada. What side were you on, Sam?
He was just, he was eligible to vote in the next election. Uh, let's see. All right, forty-one A tax deferrals, um, Article twenty-six. Is this one right? This is, this is, this is a senior-friendly article, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. Um. Yeah, I mean, it's interesting because it is, oh, okay, it is a new one. Okay.
Yes.
It is a new one. And, and the rationale is just, I mean, it's kind of a combination of inflation and um, uh, you know, maybe layered with, with some of the economic realities of, of you know, where we find ourselves with COVID, that, that it makes sense to um, uh, basically loosen some of the requirements to benefit. Okay. I am, I am guessing that the consensus is to support this article? Yeah, okay. I, I don't think we have to take a vote tonight on these. Um, but that's one that we don't have to worry about discussing with anyone or otherwise. Um. The Article twenty-seven, and I, I think I saw Mr. Haggerty lurking. This is Mr. Haggerty's article, correct?
Yeah, he's got, I think we tried to group all of his together, so he's got twenty-seven, twenty-eight, twenty-nine. Yeah, so he's got the next three.
And I said, can we bring Mr. Haggerty over?
Good evening.
Hey Jim, how are you?
Thank you.
Hey Jim, I, I don't know if you were um, in the uh, the waiting room or the blue room or whatever we call it earlier. Um, but Mr. Lit brought up the sort of interesting timing that exists right now between the town election and town meeting. Um, and he, I'm not sure if he suggested, but he at least throughout the notion of possibly continuing the town election so that the existing board would be the, the Board of Selectmen, would be the board that was intact um, for the town meeting and the election were held afterwards. It's not on our agenda. Um, I just want to put that comment on your radar screen. And I don't even need a response from you or any sort of response tonight, but maybe something to think about, we can talk about a little bit later down the line, although probably not too far down the line because you, if you were going to do something like that, I suspect you probably have to do it pretty quickly.
Yes, there are uh, some towns, um, the board's elected before the town meeting, some afterwards. I'll give you an example of Westwood, where the, the board is uh, elected before the town meeting, so I, I personally, I don't think it makes much of a difference to tell you the truth.
Okay. Okay, I didn't realize that, that there were some that functioned that way. That's interesting.
Yep.
Um, okay, um. Yeah, we haven't talked about it among ourselves. As I said, it, it came up in public comment, but since it, it, it um, would obviously impact the clerk's office, I just thought I'd let you know. I don't know if you were in the queue when we were uh, talking about that.
No, I wasn't.
Okay, all right, so let's go to Article twenty-seven. Uh, this is one you've been talking about for a while. This is pretty straightforward, correct? You just want, you want more flexibility in terms of, of um, uh, getting folks sworn in, correct?
This is actually your article, Selectmen's article.
Yeah, I think I proposed this one last year, just uh, because we had run into so many instances where people that were appointed to committees needed to be put on agenda so many times because they were away for the summer. But just to try and get a little bit of added time. Now that has somewhat been alleviated, Jim, by the new procedure that you have where if somebody is already or if someone is being reappointed, they don't need to be sworn in again, correct?
No, um, all elected officials will be sworn in and then the next thing becomes whether somebody is actually considered an official of the town. And most of the boards are not. Um, that's what it comes down to. It comes down to, I think, a nineteen oh four court case as to who, who's considered an official of the town. Uh, and, and you have to be somebody that acts with the authority of the town. And for example, uh, ZBA, Historical Commission, uh, CONCOM, things like that. Recreation Trails, uh, you know, they, they don't, they're not officials of the town. They don't have the authority to act. So uh, I'm only swearing in the people who meet that legal definition of who's in the authority of the town. Plus, in this world of Zoom, we can, you know, do this over the, uh, a situation like this to swear somebody in, so uh, we shouldn't have any difficulty swearing anybody in.
Yeah, I think this was all envisioned in a different world before COVID and just to I think it currently says fifteen days, I think. And we will look into expanding that to thirty, just because we're running into issues where people weren't around in the summer to, to get appointed or reappointed to committees.
Yep, and I think this, this would be fine. It's not going to uh, impact us in any way.
Yeah, geez, Jim, I talked to you about this so much. I thought this was your article.
That's right.
Does anybody have a problem with, with the um, uh, I, I agree with you, Brian, that it was driven by um, really, well, some of the focus was on what happens. I mean, it's sort of weird that, that terms end June thirtieth, which is, you know, the sort of prime time for people not being available.
Right.
Um. So it just gives increased flexibility, although as you point out, Mr. Haggerty's reforms in the clerk's office have addressed some of that already. Okay, so it sounds like, sounds like there's pretty strong consensus to support number twenty-seven, which is good since it's proposed by us. That's always nice when that happens.
Yeah.
Uh, all right, Jim, then twenty-eight.
Twenty-eight does two things. One is, a couple of years ago, we uh, uh, changed part of the town code uh, that had been requiring us to post a copy of the warrant on every third tree in South Row essentially. And uh, uh, when we did that, we should have also changed this other section, uh, availability of the annual town warrant to be in sync with that. So it just puts, the first part of it just simply puts it in sync as to where we're going to post the warrants uh, in, in the annual town, and, and that the town uh, report would be available. The second piece of that uh, creates a new section, which basically uh, um, gives the town the authority that if, you know, something bad were to happen, let's say we had a flood at the Trotter Year School or something. This would give you the authority to hold a town meeting in an adjoining town and um, you know, it's just something I became aware of this, the town's had, and it just made me think that you know, we've paid for a good portion of the Algonquin High School, and if something ever happened in South Row, uh, this would give us an op, give you an opportunity to choose to use that down the road. It's just, it's a you know, just a nice thing to have kind of a deal. So that's all that twenty-eight does.
Jim, does it, I'm, I'm, I'm focusing right now to it gives the authority to do that. Is it implicit then that, that since the selectmen have the authority to set town meeting, that the selectmen would be the ones that would have the ability to um, determine that the town meeting be held in a different, um, in a contiguous town?
Yes.
Specified somewhere or?
No, it's, it's your authority. We, you know, you're the, you're the, uh, the legal entity that can determine when and where a meeting is held in the town. I can get you the site on the uh, uh, Mass General Law, but it basically says unless that the meeting has to be held in the town unless something like this is uh, on our town bylaw. So this, all this is just giving you another option down the road. But it would be entirely your decision.
All right, any reaction to that, either positive or negative?
Good idea.
All right. Looks like thumbs up. The one thing, Jim, if you could send me that um, general law site, I'd just like to take a look at it just to make sure that it's clear that I, I, I'm, I'm sure you're right, but I just want to make sure it's clear that the authority then would, would rest with the, with the um, basically the town's executive. I'm sure that's what the statute says, which in our case would be the Board of Selectmen to make the determination to move it to a contiguous town.
Sure.
Okay. All right, uh, twenty-nine, uh, twenty-nine is also yours, Jim.
This just accepts a Mass General Law that allows us to consider a Saturday essentially to be a holiday. Occasionally we'll have uh, uh, voter registration deadlines or uh, other legal uh, election-related deadlines that occur on a Saturday, so we have to stay after the office and um, in six years, as the town, almost six years, the town clerk, I've had one person come in on a Saturday. So uh, you can be kind of lonely there. And all this basically does is it just instead of that deadline being on a Saturday, it would push it to the following Monday. So the uh, um, you know, it's just, it's a, a lot of towns have this. It just makes it, you know, s- smarter for us.
So basically the way it works, Jim, is that it's not, it's, it's, it's not a uniform um, um, determination of a business week. Um, but if, but if, for instance, if, if our town, um, if our townhouse is open at a, on a Saturday, that counts towards the, 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 the number of days required to do something, but if it's closed, it doesn't?
Let me say it the opposite way. Unless, unless we accept something like this that says we treat it as a holiday, then yes, we have to be open that Saturday. And this happened last summer with uh, uh, deadlines for early voting and for other things, not for the voting themselves, but for registration and requiring things. And it's just, it's it's just an archaic thing, the way the rules were set up.
It's Massachusetts, that, yeah, okay. I mean, again, it's just, it's not the way things work in courts and, and, you know, statutory requirements, but Massachusetts, it's got it embedded in its, it's, you know, seventeenth century general laws. So. Um, I'm, I'm assuming there's no issue with this provision. No. All right. All right, Jim, um, you want to weigh in on any of the other articles or are you done with us?
No, you've got, it looks like you're gonna be here for a long while, so I'll say good night.
All right.
Thank you.
Take care, Jim. Uh, all right. So thirty and thirty-one are.
Those are mine.
Yeah, and they're basically, they cut from the same cloth. Um. Basically what, cor- correct me if I'm wrong, Sam. This doesn't do anything other than give us the authority to do something.
That's correct.
Okay.
And, and thirty, we have the authority um, pretty much as we would determine for the, the thirty mile an hour or twenty-five mile an hour speed limit. Uh, thirty-one in terms of the safety zone has uh, more rigorous requirements. We've got to get traffic studies and get DOT, Mass dot approval to do that, to confirm that it qualifies as a safety zone. So I still see both of these as tools that we could have available to deal with some of the, the speeding complaints that we've gotten from various parts of town. And so it gives us another way to deal with it, uh, in addition to things like the signs that we put out there and speed bumps and other kinds of things, so.
All right, thoughts, Ms. Rasha?
Um, Sam, just, just a question on, on.
Sam, just a, just a question on, on thirty. And I'm sure I've asked you this before last year when this came up, but, um, in, it says in thickly settled or business district areas, what do you consider a business district area? I mean, I, I the majority of our businesses are on Route nine, so.
Yeah, and, and this wouldn't work for state highways, which Route nine is one, so.
Main street as well?
Excuse me?
Main street as well?
Uh, I don't, I don't remember, Lisa. I apologize, I can't.
No, 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 it's fine.
Thickly settled is pretty clearly defined in terms of, but so many houses within two hundred or quarter mile or something like that. But, uh, I will look up the business, uh, district.
Okay, fine, Sam, thank you. No, I, 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 we, I supported it last time. I just, I'm sure that I asked you the question already.
I have looked it up, and I just can't remember it.
Okay, thank you.
Chelsea?
Yeah, I'm good with these. Thank you.
Okay, Brian? Yeah. And what I'm gonna do, I, I, I'm fine with it, Sam, too. I'm gonna take, I, I pulled up seventeen C real, really quickly, and I'm just just to see what the requirements are. I think, I think the board would then determine what the process was for determining whether or not it looks like it, it's, there's no specificity in the statute itself. So we determine what sort of hearing would be required and what sort of input, so, okay.
Exactly.
Uh, and, and thirty-one is basically the same, it's, it's, again, it's cut from the same cloth.
Correct.
It doesn't require anything, but it gives us the authority to act if we choose to, and it gives us the ability to structure whatever process we want to.
Right, except, except, uh, thirty-one, it, the safety zone, Mass dot is involved in that one, so we have to do some you know, studying and so forth to qualify for that, but we could certainly initiate the process and control the process in terms of towns involvement there.
Okay, let me take a quick look at eighteen B. Okay, it still gives, it, I, I, I think you're right. It's, it's, again, it's like a lot of statutes, it's pretty vague, but it but, but it doesn't require anything in investing the Board of Selectmen the ability to come up with a process for considering whether or not to add a, a street or a portion of the street for that.
Yes.
Okay. So I think generally where both of those, there is, there seems to be consensus of, of, of support. The meals tax? It's, it's, the last time we talked about this, um, restaurants were open.
Yes. Yeah, I'll admit, I'm, and I was fully supportive of it when we took a position before, you know, pre-COVID. I could cold feet on this one now, and I fully understand it's a pass through, it's not you know, and, and added cost to, to the restaurants. But I just wonder if it sends the wrong message to try and pass this at this time. And I know part of it as well, one of the arguments was the number of people from outside of Southborough that come in and utilize restaurants, coffee shops, et cetera. You know, with office parks, office buildings closed, there's not a lot of outside people coming into Southborough. It's, for the most part, I think it's Southborough people that are utilizing these, these facilities now, so. Brian, Advisory had an interesting conversation about this one, and they actually, I think, came down on the side of proposing that it be, uh, adopted but effective for one-one-twenty-two to get sort of more out of the COVID zone, which, I'm, I'm in favor of this, uh, sooner or later, but, uh, if I had of my choice, I'd probably do it in July, but I thought the Advisory conversation was an interesting one. You know, and I'm in favor of it, long term. I still don't know what guarantees there are for, uh, January first, twenty-twenty-two. So I'd be more in favor of pushing this off a year, but certainly would defer to to, to majority vote.
Uh, maybe this is one to put on, to, to, to specifically talk with Advisory about.
Yeah.
That's an interesting idea to
Thirteenth.
Yeah. Yeah, it's an interesting idea to kick it to January one. There is wariness, though, about exactly where we're gonna be. But I guess I also, I wonder if, I wonder if Advisory has looped back to the restaurants themselves. Because, because I, again, I remember when we talked about this the last time, which I guess was the first time, the restaurants were open. And I think it was Kathy Cook who did an informal survey, and the restaurants were fine because of the, the past due nature.
There was one exception, I think Owen O'Leary's gentleman came in and
Yeah, so maybe, it'd be worth talking with Advisory about it, see if they've got an update on that information. Because, yeah, I, Brian, I share your, your wariness of putting any sort of additional burdens on, on, uh, restaurants that are gonna be trying to come back to life at some point.
Yeah.
Okay. Alright, so Public Accessibility Committee, when I read this article, I really, really liked the writing. Actually, I didn't dislike it, so I guess. This is one that we approved ourselves, so I'm assuming that we haven't changed our minds, that it's a good idea. I'm seeing Mr. Lit, Mr. Lit is still there. If Mr. Lit thinks that we, we shouldn't go forward with it, he'll let us know, I'm sure, but I think otherwise we supported it before, and I think we still support it. And it went through, it went through a decent amount of, of vetting and, and discussion, so. Okay. The Advisory Committee article.
Waiting on language.
And basically what this, but basically what they wanna do, and just in terms of concept, the, I, I, and I, I could be wrong about this, but I think the main thrust of what they wanna do is they felt a little bit hamstrung by the bylaw that prevented Advisory members from being on another committee. Uh, which is one of the reasons we, and it's sort of one of the reasons that Kathy felt obliged to resign from Capitol Planning, although that was an ad hoc committee. I mean, how do folks feel generally about the idea of you know, somebody from Advisory also being able to be on fill in the blank? You know, a standing committee, on, on recreation, on youth and family services, on council on aging. And there's arguments on both sides of it.
I, I'm not hugely in favor of great flexibility there, but I think Advisory has worked through a lot of that and has I think their last, latest position is a very sort of restrictive broadening, if you will, that's not an oxymoron, to, um, you know, light, light, lighten up on the restrictions some, but not open it up too broadly for potential conflict of interest, which I see as that if there are too many crossovers there, you could get somebody who's lobbying for, you know, their other committee.
I know John Butler, for instance, who, who was on Advisory for decades. I know he felt strongly that Advisory should not, members of Advisory should not be able to be on standing committees, because it put them in a conflicted position, because if they're on recreation and they vote in favor of something, that some, that, that compromises their independence when considering it from a financial budgetary impact as a member of Advisory. I, you know, those aren't the sort of conflicts that the state conflict of interest law really are designed to address. They're, you know, those conflicts are personal financial conflicts, not serving on different committees. I, my view is, I don't have a problem with it, but, but I get the other side of the argument. And I, I suspect Mr. Butler, as well as some others, will probably make some, uh, you know, some pointed arguments at town meeting. One, you know, if, 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 if the article goes forward, um, with language to that effect.
I think Advisory has a pretty good approach now that they're working on, so we should talk with them about it, I think.
Okay, well, we'll see them on the thirteenth, so. Uh, any other way in on that? Any other thoughts? Okay.
Nope, that's fine.
Okay. Capitol Planning Committee. They have their language. And it's consistent with what we did on an ad hoc basis. It just, you know, it, it teases it out, um, um, more. And, um, you know, specifies who members of the committee would be. And one of the concerns was that it was what were there, three? Lisa, was it three members from Advisory this time around? Yeah.
Sorry, Marty, yes, I was muted. It was three.
But this, in some respects, anyway, goes a little bit hand in hand with Article thirty-four, because you see that one of the provisions is that a member of Advisory would be on this committee.
Yes.
So how do, how do folks feel? I mean, I, I am assuming that there is strong support for making Capitol a standing committee as opposed to an ad hoc committee? Okay, yeah. Alright. And does anyone have any particularly strong sentiments for or against any of the particulars in the language that's proposed?
I'm supportive.
Yeah, it makes sense that it's, you know, that it's a, I, I'm trying to remember, and I was never on Capitol Planning. Was that, were, were any of you? Sam, were you on Capitol? You've been on every committee at some point.
Not, not that many.
Uh, I'm just trying to remember, was, was the old Capitol Committee appointed by the Board of Selectmen or by the moderator?
I think the Selectmen, but I'm not positive.
Yeah. I ju, I, I cannot remember. Again, I was never on the, on that committee. I'm just, I guess we can find that out. I just don't, I don't remember. I think it was the moderator, though. So we're doing something different from the way it was before, if that's the case. But okay, we got a chance to take a look at this, and obviously Advisory members were uh, very much a driving force behind this language, so if, if questions arise between now and April thirteenth, we'll have the opportunity to talk with them about it. Okay. Demolition delay, is this, uh, mark gonna be taken off? I, I see Mr. Weishun there.
This is, this is, this is another, this is the second of my three articles this evening. Um, so we had received, this, I believe, was, was an article or placeholder that, um, Ms. Malinowski had asked for just in case there was some changes that, you know, that may be made with, with demolition delay. There were some discussions about this with Historical Commission. Mr. Weishun has, um, sent a note that they don't intend to make any changes this year. They're not ready to do that. So I, I don't know whether the board is looking to try to make some changes or not, but i- if not, then I think this is another placeholder that could be removed.
Does anybody have what, first, I guess, and, and Mr. Weishun, you don't have to, but if if anything Mr. Purple said is wrong about you all not wanting it as a placeholder, maybe you can put your hand up and, and weigh in. Going once, going twice. Okay. I, so I guess Historical is not gonna do anything with that bylaw. I'm, I'm fine taking it off the warrant. It seems like others are as well.
Yeah, I think it needs some work, but not at this point, so.
Yeah, okay. Alright. Zoning, in some respects, I think that I, I don't have I don't have any issues with that, that I feel like I, I need to talk with, um, the zoning folks about on thirty-seven or thirty-nine. I don't know if other folks do. But even I've watched some of the, of, of the, um, planning board meeting where they talked about the outdoor illumination uh, bylaw, and, and there were a number of members of the planning board who had questions about the bylaw that overlap with some of the questions I still have about enforcement, um, applicability, stuff like that. So I think that that is definitely one where we wanna let the proponents, at least I wanna let the proponents know that I would like them to, to, um, come to our April sixth meeting and talk about that bylaw. Do other folks share that sentiment, or do they have a higher comfort level, or what?
I think there'll be a lot of public questions about that one, so the more chance we have to be prepared and understand what the answers are.
Okay. So yes, on the, on the, uh, on the sixth for that? Okay. Um, how about for thirty-seven and thirty-nine? Those are, those are almost, those are inside baseball type, uh, zoning arguments.
I think those are, again, pretty good. Thirty-nine, I think I have a question about, uh, trying, trying to remember. I think that's the one where they actually, uh, took out the, um, constructive approval language from the current process. You don't act within sixty days or so. And I, I wanna discuss that one, because I think that's a useful, uh, pressure point that's helpful to applicants, and so I'd, I'd like to have some conversation about that.
Okay, so just a heads up on plan, to planning about that as well, Mark, that that's another one of the articles that we, um, would like to talk with them about.
Okay.
Let's skip over forty for now. And Mark, I think we can, let's go to forty-two, because is that the other one that you got a note about to take off?
Yes, yeah, so Mr., again, this is, um, this is a citizen petition, um, by Mr. Weishun. Mr. Weishun has, has sent a note that he would like to withdraw the article and bring it back at such time that, um, we are allowed to have town meetings indoors again. So.
And I, you know, Mark, the only thing I said to you is, and I, is when you've got a citizen petition, can one person withdraw it, or do you have to have the citizen petitioners withdraw it? I just, I don't know the answer to that.
I'm not sure.
So I guess maybe, I, I think the inclination is to take it off if there's not, if, if, if the proponents are not wanting to go forward with it in, at the ATM twenty-twenty-one, but I just wanna make sure that we're not taking an article off that we don't have the authority to take off. Because again, yeah, 'cause ten people, or whatever the number was, I don't know what the number was, signed it to, to put the article on. I, I just, I'm not, I'm not sure that one of those, then, whatever the numbers, people can say, let's take it off. That's the only
Procedurally, then, the other option is simply to let it go to town meeting and have sponsor kid up and make a motion to indefinitely postpone and explain the reason.
Yeah.
So can the sponsor make that motion without having all the signers of the petition make the motion?
Well, but I, I think
I think anybody can make the motion.
Yeah, I think you can, I think anybody could make the motion at that point, because then it's on the floor for town meeting to consider.
I think he had more than twen- ten signatures on that, too, so.
Yeah, it just is, it, it's because Mark is absolutely right. I mean, if, you know, if, if the folks who are pushing it don't wanna push it, that's fine. I just don't know if we have the authority to take it off if, you know, from a, from a note from a sing, from a single member of, of the, the collection of signings. But let's think about that. We don't decide that tonight, but it sounds like either that is gonna be taken off by us um, or it's gonna be presumably indefinitely postponed at town meeting. So we don't have to take a position on it.
So let me check with counsel as to his thoughts, as to whether, you know, procedurally, what's the right way to go on that.
Okay. So number forty-one is the noise bylaw. Did we actually take a vote on this last time? I think we did.
I don't remember.
You did, and
It was four to one.
It was four to, four to one against supporting, or not, not to support.
Okay. Chelsea, you were neither part of the four or part of the one. So, um, Sam, you were in support of the article?
I can't remember. I support the concept, but I had some concerns about the specific, uh, numbers in there. But I can't remember whether I voted for it or not, if I did. But I think it's worth getting Mr. Lapine in and
Give him, give him an opportunity to, to, to talk to the, to the, to the Yeah, that makes sense. I'm, I'm happy to do that.
I thought at one point he was interested in making some amendments, but I'm not sure. I don't know what his current position is. I haven't talked with him.
I mean, one of my big concerns is the enforcement mechanism. Again, I don't, you know, I, I'm, I'm my view of bylaws like this generally is that they can create more problems than they solve if basically you're My view of bylaws like this generally is that they can create more problems than they solve if basically you you're just creating, you know, a a. A town of of of, you know, Dacha type. Enforcement provisions, and I worry that this is of value, but maybe you can convince us otherwise.
But there is a a problem there occasionally that would be nice to find a way to address in terms of nuisance kind of stuff.
Yeah. No, fair enough. So is there agreement that we, that we should ask the opponent to join us on? The sixth, okay. Citizen petition for Flag Road. Truck exclusion. I think this was my favorite wording for a Warren article this year.
I thought I thought lawyers were looking for precise instructions at all times.
I said, you remember, what was it, a few good men, I object. You know, overruled. No, no, I strenuously object.
That's different.
Marty, is this a new? Is this a new citizen's petition?
It is identified as new.
Okay.
I guess my reaction, I don't know, I guess I don't, maybe it's a simple question mark for you to put to. Karen. I'm fine, I'm I'm never, I I never have a problem with information. You know, I'm like, what would be required for there to be an analysis done? Of Flag Road relating to commercial truck exclusion? Is that something that could be done? You know, without a lot of heavy lifting, or is that a, is that a traffic engineer type study that needs to be done? Do you know, does anyone know? And if not, Mark, can you just find out from Karen?
Yeah, I can find out specifically, I believe that we'd have to do it, we'd have to do a traffic study to find out whether or not that that it officially meets the threshold. That the state would consider a commercial truck exclusion for the road. Karen would have to check my memory, but I believe that this issue was already informally reviewed with MassDOT. And they said, based on, you know, based on the information that they have. That they, you know, we could go through all the work, but in likelihood, the volume of traffic was not going to meet the threshold. And and I think that there was, but I know there was nothing formally ever done, I think this was an informal discussion with with Mast dot. Between Mast dot officials and Karen.
My recollection as well, that we're we're, in fact, they weren't even very near the threshold, is my recollection, so.
All right, well, let's nail that down. I mean, if that's, if if we'd be tilting at windmills, then it's not worth tilting, so. So you'll take care of that, Mark?
I will take care of that.
So are we down to the downtown district?
Yes.
Okay, so. We've got, Lisa, correct me if I'm wrong about the posture. We now, after a a series of meetings, we are, we have a a newly revised. Document that has been vetted through Judy Barrett and Adam Costa. And among other things, that document will be available for a forum a week from tonight. For discussion, but it's not, it's not a final product yet, still can be amended, still could be added to, et cetera.
The the only thing I would ask Marty on on this is, and and we can possibly do it even before the meeting. I think the board needs to take a position that this is the the. Before we we put it up for a forum, the board needs to agree. To the changes, at least that that's the document that we're going to work from for the forum. Those changes were based on the questions that the Planning Board had, so. I'm just, I again.
It's, well, let me put it this way, it looked like minor changes. From where we were before.
I'm not so sure.
Yeah, I mean, the FAR came out, I think that was a a fairly substantial change. So.
Which I don't support personally, but.
You don't support it being out or in?
I don't support what has been done, it's changed what is 80% of the lot size.
Well, I I think that was a concern of mine as well, Sam, what that number should be, and, you know, we haven't really had a discussion on that piece. But I think everything else in 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 relation was fairly minor, it was just clarification. On some of the questions.
My reaction, Lisa, is I would like to hear. Judy Barrett and Adam Costa explain. Why that number is important one way or the other.
Okay, so Judy wasn't. Available for the full time of the forum, Adam is definitely going to be there, the two of them had talked, and he can address. Some of the the questions that we needed clarification on, the split lot, and Adam will be prepared, I will reach out to Judy and the two of them can have a discussion. On the, so Adam can either speak to that, or we can set a specific time that Judy can jump in and and answer that question.
Okay. Well, how do folks feel? So so Lisa, are you, are you proposing that we make a decision to support the changes before the forum, or? Well, let me ask you, I'll leave it at that, that we make make a decision whether or not to support it before the forum?
To support that document as our our document that we're still going to continue discussion on, but. Yes, except that. Those were the recommended changes that that Planning Board was was looking for, other than, I think, the FAR, Sam, Mimi had a question on that as well, so.
I thought there was some other questions that the Planning Board had, I'm I'm happy with going forward with this one, but I think I'm going to have some other suggestions, too, in addition to that one, so.
Agreed, Sam, and I think that's part of the forum as well, is I know EDC has some questions, and it gives us the opportunity to discuss as well. You know, where where we eventually end up. I I think the big, the big point of the forum was is is there's been some specific questions by the public that we wanted to make sure that that we addressed and at least allowed the public to have a conversation. You know, with Adam and or Judy, depending on.
I agree, that's an important thing to do, I don't want to slow that down, but I guess I'm not ready to say I support. The current draft, even. Plus or minus the 80% thing.
Right, so, I mean, my my only question was, is is if the board would be willing to. Support that draft as a continued discussion document. I I don't know that we can.
Well, that, Lisa, I mean, God, particularly since the amount of work that's gone into getting us to this point with this document, so moved.
That's easy, yeah.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
I don't think we need a formal vote, but but there clearly is consensus that 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 that. Obviously, the document can get changed, I suspect it will get changed.
Yep.
But but for purposes of carrying the discussion forward, absolutely.
Okay, that was my only concern, Marty, so that that is the document that, you know, that will be up for discussion, and and again, Sam, I I agree. I know Mimi had five specific points that she was still looking for some some clarity, and that was one of them.
So I know, I know, too, that Adam Costa, and I I wasn't involved in discussions, Lisa, but I but but. The substance of the of the discussions were conveyed to me that Adam Costa, he's a lawyer, right?
Yes.
He does, he does, you know, land planning and et cetera. And that he has, he has. He has got a a good explanation for. For instance, why a zoning map would look the way a zoning map does, what the advantages disadvantages are of split lots versus not split lots.
Yep.
Again, it's not, that's not the determining factor about what the lots look like, but he is, he is expert in explaining why they exist. Why they exist in South Row, how the the existing map and the existing zoning would impact those lots, and I think be very informative, certainly for me, but I think for folks who have been interested in the issue. So, and he'll be available at the meeting, so that's good. Okay, so I think that is. Mark, you, it's it's. I mean, the big categories of. Of items are. Some zoning articles and and to be determined on on CPA CPA stuff. But we also, again, recreation touches on them. You know, the, again, the proponents of the bell tower, I think it's important that we hear from them and give them an opportunity to make their case. And, you know, others that we identified, we've identified throughout. So hopefully that gives some guidance on where we currently stand with the articles and can clean up a lot more of it on April 6th, that makes sense?
I think it makes sense, I think that the agenda for 46 is going to be two pages.
Yeah.
Because we're going to, I'll I'll provide, I'll provide, you know, in the draft version, I'll provide a list of not only the articles to address, but also the departments. That the board wants to see based on the. Based on the 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 guidance that was given the last time around.
Yeah, okay. Okay, well, one good thing is that 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 a big, you know, a lengthy discussion on. April 6th. Obviously would have been the Board of Health. And. It's still worthy of continued discussion on April 6th, but. Hopefully, we've we've. Shortcuted some of that with the pretty lengthy discussion we had about various things, and I've got a much better understanding about where they're coming from and and. Why they think their proposal is necessary to address the core services.
Marty, can I just add one thing? There was a comment in the the chat from Marcy Jones that the lettuce squama neighborhood looks forward to the expert opinion on the zoning lots. And map related to the downtown initiative will be prepared with our questions.
I bet they will.
And we look forward to that discussion.
Good, it is, the 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 little bit I heard from Mr. Costa is like most things, it's a more complicated issue than you think. So. So thanks, Ms. Jones, for that for that comment. And I think we are done with. What was that? Item six. A and B, so we now are on item seven, round two of public comment. Mr. Lit, I gave him an opportunity earlier, he didn't take it. But he's back again.
Yeah, you're stuck with me again, so three things, I hope they won't take terribly long.
Okay.
The first, in response to your question, Mr. Healy, a while back, I have heard members of CPC say in front of other boards. That in some cases, their vote to bring something to town meeting doesn't necessarily mean that individual members will support it, or even the board will support it at town meeting, they just. Believe that they have an obligation to bring it before town meeting. So, for what it's worth. Second, I was really pleased to that you were able to appoint Mr. Montio to the. Technology manager position. But. I think you only did half the job, the other piece is you need to appoint him as the ex officio member to the to the Municipal Technology Committee. Those are actually separate appointments.
That's, so let me, let me jump in, we talked. We talked about the possibility of doing that, and I I I think I'd be surprised if there weren't general agreement that that is going to happen, but right out of the box, we wanted to get Mr. Montio appointed. Let him get his. His virtual office set up as part of the town of South Row, and then get him appointed in pretty short order to that, so you're you're, you are, we're on the same wavelength, we just chose not to do it tonight.
I would have encouraged you to do it because I think it gets him engaged in the process and make sure that, you know, he's included on agendas and. And topics as they come up, but. Obviously, it's your choice. The third thing. I wanted to. Make a point that I think Ms. Woodford. Neglected to make as she was talking about. Staffing and what's COVID and what isn't. A lot of the. COVID trace, contact tracing and tracking is being done by per diem nurses that are completely outside the budget, that's done through CARES Act funding, and that is stuff that will go away. Or get reduced as COVID goes away and gets reduced, so I didn't want you to end up with the impression that all the COVID stuff is being handled. Or the incremental COVID stuff is being handled by the current staff. And those are my three items for you.
Fair point, thank you very much. And additional public comment, going once. Going twice. Is there a motion?
Move to adjourn.
Second, seconded by Mr. Shea, Ms. Brascio.
Hi.
Ms. Malinowski.
Hi.
There you go. Mr. Shea, hi, Mr. Stivers.
Hi.
And Mr. Healy is, hi.
Comment that I had booked another two hours for this meeting, I'm very disappointed, but we're done here.
I think I'm going to go watch a Capitol Planning Committee, or maybe advisory, I'll fill in the time. All right, good night, everybody, see you next week.
Good night.